Good, good. Now, how many can tell me who controls the House in this state? Well, let me ask you this. Uh, who can tell me how many Jonas Brothers there are? Yeah, everybody, okay?
That's sad. We know, like, stupid stuff like that, but we don't know, like, real issues.
Who here knows what a special interest group is? And who here wants to answer that? How about when you hear "special interest group," what do you think of?
Money.
Money? What does that mean to you? If you heard the term "special interest group," what would you think? What's that bring to mind? What's that bring to you?
Is this gonna be on television?
No.
You're embarrassing me right now, thank you.
No, no, man, no! No, I'm asking you! I wanna know what you—
I—I'm not sure.
A special interest group?
Mm-hmm.
Somebody who's lobbying for their own agenda, essentially?
Okay.
A group that represents specific needs of people, like Greenpeace.
Okay, okay. There's a rose right here, baby! When you hear "special interest group," what do you think of? How's it make you feel?
Well, I don't really like them very much.
Okay.
You know, because I—I'm concerned that they've got more power than the rest of us do.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Quite frankly.
Well, how does it make you feel when you hear, "Hey, I'm part of a special interest"? What do you think of?
I think it's fine if it's my interest.
Yeah.
And it's special.
Yeah, a special interest group literally specializes in one thing: lobbying for that particular cause or corporation or point of view. And that representative democracy, you have a right to petition your government, and that's—that's why they get to do that.
It's the magic of it all. That's your question about our government? All right, next question. Raise your hand if you think that people who hold public office have your best interests in mind. Let me ask you this. What words pop into your mind when you hear the word "politician"? Yes?
Uh, unfair?
Yes.
Leadership. conniving.
Oh, okay. Back here?
Correct.
Okay.
Celebrity.
Green?
Self-obsessed.
I've been called the same thing. But, okay. Okay. In the blue, in the back over here?
Crooked.
Mm-hmm, it'd just be light. Uh, okay. Raise your hand if you'd ever use the word "trustworthy" in describing a politician. So let me—
We had a closed session upstairs to receive, uh, legal advice, and we're now back to the regular meeting. And we don't have any additional agenda items, and I will skip the agenda scheduling update this week, so we will go right to public comment. If anybody'd like to speak on anything, uh, at all. Three minutes. Please identify yourselves. Mr. Lovelace is gonna go first, and then anybody else who wants to speak can come up to the podium.
My name's Pat Lovelace. Seventy-six twenty Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland. Your favorite peace delegate. I also wanted to, uh, let everybody know that it was such a wonderful time last week with the Ward Five meeting, and at the, uh, public comment period where so many people came—came here and spoke up. It was so great. It was very cold out last week, and it was—I was—I was very surprised to see that many people come out, and I'd like to see that more often. I'd like to see if we could, uh, reach out to our, uh, community and have our, uh, young people participating in Ward Night also. That would be wonderful, to hear, uh, what affects our children in our neighborhoods, you know, if the gangs are affecting them, are scaring them, if they're getting by in their schools and all that, what they want—it's what they can do to help with our, uh, environment and all that, and I'd love to be able to see that. I'd love to be able to see the, uh, the young ones come out and speak at our comment area, fuck, as if I'm the public also. And I'd like to see if we could reach out to our, uh, audience and our—and our community and ask them to come on out, bring their kids and bring their, uh, young ones out, and see what they have to say about us, see if they think you're a good report. And also, I'd like to, uh—I'd like to ask you people to really think carefully when you vote on that tree ordinance. I don't wanna see any, uh, changes making it easier to cut trees down. I want—I'd like to see it make it harder to cut trees down, because once a tree is cut down, you cannot put it back, and all in years of, uh, water, uh, stormwater treatment is gone. All that management's gone. All that, uh, oxygen they're giving us is gone. If we continue cutting all our trees down, every damn one of us are gonna be on one of these things, because we won't be able to have enough oxygen in our atmosphere. Because then we'll all have these tanks to carry around, and it'd be sad to see that. Also, I wanna, uh, give—a give out a public thanks to my, uh, two nurses, Henry and Benedicta. You know Benedicta, like the Pope. They are doing everything they can to keep me well so I can continue going to these meetings. They're doing everything they can to keep me out of nursing homes, keep my medications level, keep my health, uh, level, keep my oxygen levels, uh, doing good, keeping me out of the hospital, and I haven't been in a hospital for almost a year now. And, uh, thank God, and thank Henry and Benedicta. They work with Sandra's Nursing, by the way. And money going to them is money going away from our war machine, remember? So do what we can to keep the peace, keep our trees, and get—keep our youth involved in our, uh, community activities, and well as our community politics. Thank you for letting me share. Continue on the good work, everybody.
Thank you. Would somebody else like to speak? And if you can identify yourself, and, uh, there's three minutes, and you'll hear a beep at thirty seconds out.
Uh, my name's Fred Levinson. I live at nine hundred Heather Avenue, right here in the wonderfulness of Tacoma Park. Actually, on the corner of Heather and Sligo Creek Parkway. And at the beginning of the weekend, I found this on the, uh, post. You are familiar with these, I'm sure. They're all around, uh, Silver Spring, Tacoma Park. I took it down, and the next day, there were two of these on the same pole, as well as all the way down Sligo Creek Parkway, which are not there as we speak now. I, uh, some time ago, when Ms. Kathy Porter was mayor, I was also pulling down some signs that were—I forget what they were advertising, it was pretty obnoxious. And I asked her, "Was it illegal for me to pull the signs down? Could I be sued?" And she said, "No, it is illegal to put the signs up on those." My question is, can we call up these numbers? This one is in the district, which is also in Tacoma Park, by the way. Uh, I saw these here. And this is, uh, Maryland. Can we call these up and talk to these guys and say, "Hey, fella, you better take these signs down, because we're going to find you for every sign illegal—you every illegal sign you put up in, uh, maybe a, uh, little jail time." Is that possible? You don't have to ask me right now? I'll leave these with you? You guys can steal it if you wish.
I—I will say that, uh, the—I know that, uh, city staff has called a number of the numbers in the past to, uh, remind them that they're not allowed to put those signs up, and there have been some—there was at least one event where, uh, everybody went out and, uh, gathered signs, and there was—brought them all down here, and there were prizes for the people who brought the most in.
Wow.
Uh, but I'm not sure of the status of, uh, being able to find on that.
The issue, sir, is that, um, we have a phone number, and as a mayor indicated, staff will call. Um, in order to issue a citation, we have to be able to tie that phone number to an actual address. Um, and sometimes that's not as achievable as you—we might like. Uh, we certainly do pursue these issues.
All I have to say. Thank you much.
Did somebody else have a question on this?
Yeah, I just was, uh, curious if we have fined anyone, or, you know, have we actually, uh, taken action against any of these organizations?
The answer is no.
In—in the past, I've asked about the authority to have an anti-flyer ordinance, and I—you know, I don't think that we do at the city have an anti-flyer ordinance. But I—I used to work at, um, South Coast Plaza in Costa Mesa, where they had an anti-flyer ordinance, and if you started to put flyers on cars or put flyers on-on posts, they—they would fine you. And, uh, it was much—it was much easier to—to find the folks. And if they actually caught you doing it, then they would actually cite the person who was doing it as well. But that part of the problem was that they're going up on telephone poles, which aren't our property.
Right. 'Cause I remember that—is it the case that technically we can't cite for putting them on a telephone pole, because Pepco owns the pole, not us? Is that the case?
Well, we could if we had an MOU with Pepco to enforce it.
Um, I'm not su—Sarah Daines, I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development Department. Um, I'm not sure what limitations we have in terms of citing, uh, someone for putting signs on Pepco's poles. I do know that, as the city manager indicated, the biggest challenge we have is that most of these numbers are cellphone numbers with no specific business or address associated with them. So we will make phone calls, and they'll say, "Sure," and then they put them up fifteen minutes after we tear them down again. We're as frustrated with the whole situation as, uh, you and the community are, um, and until we figure out a different way to do the enforcement. Right now, we're just stuck in this sort of endless circle of tearing them down, calling them.
But—but we could do something like publicize the phone numbers of these—that keep putting up signs that blight the community, and if people want to just inundate those phone numbers with requests to take the signs down, they might get the message.
That's an option.
There might be options. I would like to suggest that we have a council discussion of that in a meeting some future time rather than right now.
Will do.
Could we—could we, um, simply have, uh, someone like Captain Corsi call up and suggest the person meet them at a certain address for a truck that they wanted to sell? The person would then come, and, uh, the police could inquire, um, as in to—if they put the signs up, uh, why they would be there, if they hadn't put the sign up with the telephone number, and then they could be cited at that time?
I think Captain Corsi would be ideal for that.
So we will—we will, uh, have a discussion about some options on that. Thank you for, uh, reminding us of how irritating this is. Anybody else have any public comment? Okay. We will move along to council comments. Any of my colleagues have any coun—any comments? Councilmember Robinson?
There's a group in Montgomery County called Peace Action Montgomery, and, um, they're— one of their aims is to, uh, move, uh, money from the federal—in the federal budget away from the defense budget and towards community projects. And, um, Senator Raskin at the state, uh, our—our state representative has circulated a letter to his colleagues at the state, and, um, Councilmember Rosenthal has a—has, um, is circulating a letter in Rockville amongst the county council, um, to gain support for a resolution or a letter of support for these, uh, for this. And I'd—I'd like to—I spoke to, uh, Ruben via email earlier in the day, and, um, I'd like to convince the rest of you to, uh, sign on to such—either such a res—a resolution or a letter of support for this kind of thing to our, uh, our federal representatives. So I don't quite know how to introduce that, but I have some language, uh, that's been viewed as a resolution, that the, uh, a—a model resolution, and, um, I'll circulate that over the next couple of days to the rest of you, my colleagues, and see if I can, uh, convince you to sign on.
And if people want to do that, and we want to do a resolution, we can share that language with the clerk.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
On Maple Avenue, uh, running from basically right before the Liz Lerman studio, there continues to be a problem with some sort of leaking pipe. Well, as I looked at it more closely when I was walking home today, I think it's actually somewhat a—my guess is it's somebody's sump pump that is pumping out a—a tube that comes out right at the, um, uh, rate—it comes actually out of the bottom of the sidewalk right into the street. Um, and it basically is creating, when it's freezing like now, a significant ice lick all the way from, um, that had—the edge of that house down across, uh, in—in front of the entrance to the parking lot for Liz Lerman, and then the next parking lot, um, and makes the sidewalk very icy, and when it's not frozen, it—it's a—just a constant source of water. So I think that—I'm not sure, maybe it's a leaking pipe, but I suspected someone's sump pump pumping out into the street, which I can't imagine is—
It's not legal.
—is legal. Um, I—I think the address is seventy-one sixty-three, but it's the first house after the Liz Lerman studio. So I'd appreciate it if we could get that—
Sure.
—uh, resolved.
I have a little bit of information on that.
Oh, go ahead.
Not on that particular place, but there are two of those ice dams on my ward, one on Sycamore and one on West Moreland, and I brought them to the attention of, uh, Daryl Braithwaite this morning, and she said that that as—it can be the case, is often the case, and that, uh, Daryl's looking into the ones in—in my ward to see if she can reroute that wa—what it would take to reroute that water to the storm drain as opposed to add onto the street. That's the task at hand, so I encourage you to talk to Daryl about that one, too.
Um, and then the second item is I understand that, uh, Montgomery County delegation is putting forth—or considering putting forth a bill, um, for, uh, same-sex marriage in the state of Maryland. I would be supportive of us either testifying or passing a resolution in support of that—that legislation, uh, when it comes, uh, before the, um, the House and the Senate in Annapolis.
We can, uh, find language on that one as well. Uh, Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I was just reading about, um, the rent control issues we were discussing earlier. I just want to, um, thank the city for pursuing the—speaking of water leaks, uh, the water leak that was coming from the bridge on Carroll over Sligo Creek. I've had several occasions to go on the road now, and there is no leak now. Always fun to, uh, notice the absence of a problem.
Are you talking about the part from Jefferson to the bridge? Between Ward—
No, it's—
—three and Ward two?
No, it's actually on Sligo Creek. It's, um—it used to be, um, there was a leak that ended up on Sligo Creek, and, um, the city finally got State Highway to dig a trench, clear out the drain, that sort of thing, and then also there was a repair to the little—I guess it's Old Carroll Road, I think.
On that side of the bridge, though?
Yeah, it was on that side of the bridge.
'Cause there's—there's a leak on the other side.
On the other side. Right. No, I wasn't talking about that one.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. I just quickly would like to congratulate Peter Franchot. Uh, today he was, uh, sworn in for his second term as state comptroller. I think he's done a great job, uh, in—improving collections of taxes, and I know we all look forward to seeing his signature on future letters. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Last week, uh, at this, uh, um, city council session, we had a number of, uh, residents from the Mapleview Towers, uh, speak during the public comment period about their, uh, ongoing problems, uh, between the—the residence improvement association, as they call it, and the landlord. And, um, at that time, in listening to that and responding, I—I asked, requested that—that this—obviously, the city's gonna look into it, see what what the issues are, and the police department's already involved. And I suggested at that time that it might be a good idea for us to receive a report back, a progress report, say in ninety days or—or a hundred and twenty days, or whenever is an appropriate time. And I just want to repeat, having thought about it some more, is that just to make sure that that—that that gets paid attention to, so that we—we here are responsive as a city council to the pleas of a really unfortunate pleas of of residents in that—in that particular building, uh, that need help. I know we're been very concerned about tenants and—and and the—and the possible renovations of of some of these other buildings that are also getting older, and, you know, talking about payments in lieu of taxes, or pilots, as they're known. But this is another kind of a situation where we—apparently, you have tenants who aren't being, uh, taken seriously by the owner or—the landlord, at least from the tenant's point of view. So I'd just like us to try and make sure whether we are following up on that and paying attention to it. Two other thoughts. One is, uh, uh, an announcement to residents of Ward Six, uh, that on Thursday, uh, February third in the evening, the, uh, city's Department of House Community Development and the person of Alana Blanchard is going to be, uh, coming out to the community to hold a meeting, uh, with—with whomever shows up to talk about the sector plan, uh, for the Tacoma Langley area. More—the sector plan was basically approved via a resolution of the city council really rather a long time ago, uh, but it has never—it's never really yet quite gotten to the city—to the county council for final approval. Uh, this would be kind of like a refresher session, uh, for an op—and it could provide an opportunity for constituents, uh, to understand exactly what the sector plan is all about, what it tries to accomplish, what its limits are, and that sort of thing. And so, uh, I—I want to use this forum to make sure that people are aware that that meeting is going to be, uh, happening, and to thank the staff for, uh, undertaking it that did my suggestion. And finally, just to mention, uh, in passing, uh, that we've just—that the city and—and residents are—have been made aware of a, uh, a problem of of homelessness in a section of the Sligo, uh, evidence of homeless people living in the woods, uh, in a section of the Sligo Creek watershed down near New Hampshire Avenue. And, um, I—several of us are trying to, uh, un—dis—discover the—the scope of the whole thing and the, uh, and what can be done to, uh, solve this problem, 'cause it has several aspects of it that are—need to be addressed, and, uh, and I'm working on trying to do that. Don't have any results to report on—on it, but it's just something I want folks to know that is a concern, and I'm working very closely with city—with the city on—on that at this point in time. Thank you.
Does the city manager have any comments?
Um, actually, I was gonna ask Sarah Daines to give the council a scheduling update on the sector plan and the CR zone. She did leave some information at your places on the dais tonight.
Okay.
Um, the last couple of weeks, the city council and the community have been engaged in a conversation regarding the sector plan and the proposed amendments to the recently adopted commercial revitalization or CR zones. And since Friday, there have been a number of changes in the schedule that I wanted you to be aware of. And because it's kind of confused, I've broken it out into two sections. So the piece of paper that Jesse passed out beforehand breaks it out into two different tasks, plus provides some online resources that you may wish to share with your constituents. The CR zone is going to be heard by the county council on January twenty-seventh, and—excuse me, the Montgomery County Planning Board on the twenty-seventh. And based on my conversation with their staff, that will be an ongoing agenda item on, um, every week until the, uh, details are worked out as far as the proposed amendments. So if people are interested in tracking that, they can attend the meeting, or they can watch it online, or go back and look at the transcripts from the meetings themselves. But the—the next two meetings that, um, have been scheduled are the twenty-seventh of, um, January in the morning. And while it says here it's Agenda Item eleven, it's actually the third item on the agenda. Um, and then, again, on February the third, also a work session, and both of those are held in the morning over at, um, Park and Planning's building on Georgia Avenue. On the opposite side of the sheet, it is a, uh, schedule for the Tacoma Park—or, excuse me, Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan. And you may recall that, uh, when we last spoke, there was a public hearing scheduled by Montgomery County for, uh, tomorrow evening. That has been postponed and moved to the afternoon of February first, which is a Tuesday, and that would be held up at the county council building over on Rockville, um, excuse me, Maryland Avenue. They are not anticipating a lot of public comment in that period—or at that time, because they're, um, and, um, tentatively scheduling another public hearing later in May, which would coincide theoretically with the adoption of the CR zoning text amendments. So if people are interested in testifying on the first, um, it may be most appropriate to submit their comments in writing at that point in time. I believe they're not accepting any additional, um, te—or folks to testify at that particular time on the first, but it does not mean that they would not have an opportunity to participate in the public hearing process later in the year. The sector plan is also being referred to the Fed Board, um, the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee, and that will be, um, heard or discussed by them on Monday, February seventh at their meeting in the morning. And again, that will be part of an ongoing series of conversations that they have. The one thing that I'd like the board to be aware of is that there is a discussion at the county level to remand the sector plan, as well as the sector plan for Kensington, back to the planning board. If the planning—if they were to do that, that would give the city council and the community an opportunity to revisit what the impact of the proposed CR zone amendments would have on the Tacoma Langley Crossroad Sector Plan, and address some of the other issues that, um, have been raised in conversations. One of the intents of the various meetings that Alana Blanchard is putting together for, um, folks to review the sector plan is that, as Councilmember Schultz indicated, it's been a long time since this plan was last presented to the city council. I think it's over a year. So we're hoping through that process, in terms of reminding people of what the plan says, clearly identifying what the implications are, that if it is in fact remanded to the planning board, um, the discussion would be limited basically to what impact the proposed CR amendments would have on the sector plan, and if any of those amendments would like, uh, the city would like any of those new zoning designations, the CR town and the CR residential, um, to be applied to the sector plan map. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call, but in the meantime, the schedule has changed, and, um, there will not be any real conversation about the sector plan until later this spring. They're hoping to time that with, uh, again, the adoption of the, uh, text amendments that are ongoing at the moment.
Yeah, I believe the whole effort is to, uh, make the t—the timeline and the conversation match—
Mm-hmm.
—for the commercial residential zone and the sector plan. And my understanding was that they were adjusting the timeline on the, uh, sector plan adoption, so that essentially, they would be, uh, trying to bring it to a conclusion—the beginning of the conclusion sometime in May with public hearings, with final adoption scheduled for sometime in July.
Right.
I'm gonna ask you, Sarah, to very briefly describe the difference and the sequencing between the master plan, the sector plan, the CR zone, and the zoning text amendments. I understand them a little, but my concern is that some people may misinterpret that your comment about the public hearing being delayed until the—the CR zone or commercial residential zone is actually adopted, which tends to—and I—I might think that—that they—that they're waiting until it's done before they hear—hear from the public. I was a little concerned when I first heard you talk about that. Could you just take a couple of minutes and try to put those things into context?
I will try. It's very confusing.
I know it is.
I mean, I apologize for giving you that impression. Basically, they're running—
It wasn't your fault.
(laugh) When you call and you ask, you get various different answers. Um, basically, they're running a parallel track. So the intent is that the— So the intent is that the proposed amendments to the CR zone would be reviewed and adopted in whatever form they are prior to the sector plan being finalized.
Okay. Let me just stop you and clarify for myself as you go a little bit here. You got your master plan.
Right.
Then you got your CR zone, which is part of the zoning, the list of zones that are available in the county.
Correct.
And do those zones have to support the master plan?
The master plan identifies the zones that are felt to be appropriate for that area. So once the master plan is adopted, then the zones would be applied on top of that.
We currently have a master plan for our area of the county.
Correct.
So are these zones in compliance? Is the CR zone in full compliance with our master plan as it stands now?
It does because there is no CR zone reference in our master plan because it was adopted prior to the CR zone coming into existence.
That implies that if they invent a zone that's not in the plan, it's okay because it's not in the plan, which my little antennas start to wiggle on that one right away, but I'm sure there's a good answer for it.
Changes to the zoning map are based on the recommendations or the land uses identified in the master plan. So if your master plan does not include a CR zone, then a CR zone would not be applied unless there were changes in the master plan itself.
So if you, if they adopt a CR zone, then it's one of the news, it's a new zone that's available.
Correct.
So if the master plan then gets redrawn, it can include the CR zone as an option. Is that, is that a good way of putting it?
Yes.
Okay.
The master plan that we have, or the sector plan, and again, it's just a small part of the community, so not a community or plan for the community as a whole, does not include the Old Town area or the Tacoma Junction area, for example. The sector plan that is, has been initially reviewed by the council and supported with some recommendations, does not include any of these proposed amendments. It does include areas where-
Which amendments?
The CR residential and town.
Okay, so the sector plan is-
Or CR neighborhood and-
The sector plan is different from the master plan?
The sector plan is like a mini-master plan. It's a very small, clearly defined geographical area within a larger master plan.
Okay, so it, the sector plan then can redefine what can go on in a part of a master plan?
Correct.
Okay, so you got your master plan, then now there's a sector plan, which is a certain section of it, and the CR zone in this case would apply in this sector plan.
Correct, but, and again, it's only for the sector plan. It's not for the rest of the community.
Then what about the zoning text amendments?
The zoning text amendments are applied based on the recommendations in the sector plan or the master plan. So one of the reasons why it's, it could be a positive thing for the delay in the Tacoma Park, Tacoma Langley Crossroad Sector Plan is that it would allow the planning board and the county council to identify those transitional areas that the neighborhood is concerned about where those CRT and CR, excuse me, CR neighborhood and CR town zones could be identified as being appropriate for individual parcels. Right now, it's all CR.
And the, so there's the three kinds of CR zones that are being identified, commercial, town and neighbor and residential. Am I right?
Right now, there's one and they're looking at adding two additional subcategories if you will.
Are those zoning text amendments or are those just additional zones?
They're text amendments.
I'm still confused, but thank you for your clarification. I'm less confused.
There's a text amendment, then there's a map amendment, which they're all in theory based on the sector plan or the master.
And so right now, CR zone doesn't apply anywhere in Tacoma Park because the sector plan hasn't been adopted.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else from the city manager?
No.
Okay, then we will move along to the presentation by the emergency preparedness committee.
Okay, before we start, I'd like to do two things. Number one, I'd like to thank somebody publicly who is very important to our committee and who has helped us along all the time quietly. Nobody knows it, nobody watches it, and this is Jessica. Secondly, I'd like to say that I don't believe that chairs of committees should classify in their chair. Therefore, our committee designed bylaws which limit the term of a chair for three years, and my three years are up. And I'd like to introduce the new chair of the committee, Jennifer Cudinaitis. And Jennifer is highly qualified to be the chair of that committee since she is working for the Red Cross for disaster relief. So she knows emergency in and out and she can guide the committee for the future. Thank you. So if we both together will now make the presentation. Good. Now, the first thing I want to say, at the beginning of 2010, our committee met for a retreat. In our committee, there was a tension between being very active and doing things and being reviewed contemplative, so kind of advisory to the city and look at everything the city does and saying there's no good and so on. And we kind of found a middle way between both, namely be advisory and be active in those ways. And this was the big result of this meeting. The second big result of this meeting was that we formed subcommittees to do the work of the committee. And these subcommittees, we want to describe to you because it describes the work we have done. And I described first the volunteer subcommittee. Volunteer subcommittee reached out for getting trained volunteers to the city. And one group of trained volunteers for the city are CERT members. CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. We had left over four CERT members in the city and we worked very hard with the county to have a CERT training close by here. And thanks to the American Legion, we were allowed to use their facilities to have CERT training in our neighborhood. So people from Tacoma Park to whom we appealed to join could join the training and then did and then finished the training. And we have another option for doing training in Rockville starting January 26th. So we have now currently 14 trained CERT members in the city. And I'd like to do anything possible to keep the volunteers connected with the city and active with the city. You know, nourishment of volunteers is such an important thing for any entity, in particular for a city. People come and go and you have to keep them interested, you have to keep them employed with the city. There are other volunteer options which we want to pursue in this committee. One is to get shelter training, which is offered by the American Red Cross and I want to take that. The other one is ham operator training, which Tom Horn is promoting, and I might want to take that too. Okay, now.
Another one of our committees is the communications subcommittee. This has been probably one of the most active pieces as far as the outreach that we're doing. So we had a presence at all of the community fairs in Tacoma Park this year. We've also done a number of newsletters and also one public service announcement for this past year. Our next committee is the review committee. So we've been looking over a lot of the city's emergency manuals and the policies just to make sure that everything is kind of in line and helping along with the process. And the last committee?
The last committee we formed is the strategic planning committee, which made a plan for 10 years to give consistency to the emergency preparedness committee. The plan is attached and I'm not quite sure how we proceed with this. I assume since you give the orders to us, what we should do, that you have to review the strategic plan committee and give our okay for this or give your suggestions for the, so the plan is attached to this and I think it will not be a discussion of this report, but we will come back and talk about this in future.
And to talk a little bit about our future plans for 2011, you have the list in front of you and as you can see, it's kind of long, there are 11 or 12 projects on there. I want to highlight four or five of them. One of them certainly is helping to complete the annexes for the emergency operations plan. Another one is following up on emergency preparedness sessions with the council. We know that, we all know that there are a lot of issues during the snowstorm last year and we want to make sure that we're working closely with the council to provide the support you need when citizens come to you guys with concerns about emergencies and preparedness and that. So we're kind of figuring out a little plan and we'll be in touch with you guys certainly on that. We also want to continue our working with local partners. We can't do anything by ourselves in an emergency and you need to know the people you're working with before you get to the scene. Local faith-based organizations, we certainly have a number of them in the city, and of course, the Adventist Hospital and the Tacoma Park chapter of the Lions Club. We've also, something we started this year was community presentations on preparedness, how working at the local level, the neighborhood groups can work together to prepare themselves during a disaster. So we did, we did one this past fall and we're hoping to do a couple more throughout the year. And lastly, looking into seeing what kind of updates we might be able to make for the webpage and just, I know, looking at webpages for emergency preparedness information is not always the most exciting, so seeing maybe what we can do to put some clips on there from YouTube and connecting to some of the other information that's already out there.
So you're open for your questions and comments?
I have a question on the, your listing in the, in the strategic plan on page four, the duties of the emergency preparedness committee, and the last one talks about suggesting test scenarios to the city manager and providing committee members to be present in the city's emergency operations center during test exercises and act as observers during tests, provide input to the after-action report of the test. And I just wanted to get a sense maybe from the city manager, the extent to which we're using test scenarios, the extent to which we're testing things, and I know there was some interest on the part of some of my colleagues for understanding and participating in a, in a possible scenario and just wondering kind of where we are with that.
Captain Corser may want to address this. I think as I mentioned at a recent council meeting, all of the management staff, I think it was about a year ago, participated in a joint exercise with the city of Gaithersburg. I know you're involved heavily with a lot of the county emergency management exercises and kind of coordinating, touching base with us during those mock exercises.
That was an exercise that the city manager's referring to for the COOP plans that we engaged in in the process of writing the COOP plans. Very eye-opening in some respects, but also we were better prepared than we thought in other respects. So we had kind of a mixed reaction with that. We do participate with the county on a number of their exercises throughout the year. In fact, we have one coming up Wednesday that we'll be participating in. It's a communication type exercise. Most of the exercises do have communication aspects to it, whether they're internal communications or communication to the public. And that's, that's what we exercise mostly on doing. We haven't really set down to incorporate a lot of the city departments into some of these exercises. I don't think we're quite ready for that. We've just adopted the plan. We have some of the annexes that we need to flesh out. As we flesh out annexes, we'll probably come up with ideas about exercises to develop around them.
May I point out one thing? That's the charge you gave us, the council, with the committee, to develop scenarios and to assist in exercising.
Right. And I just wanted to understand kind of where we are in that process, knowing that ideally we get to the point where it's not just, you know, a small number of people participating jointly with other municipalities or the county, but we get to the point where the council members have a chance to understand how we fit into that and people in the community understand some of these things as it affects how various messages will be relayed or what the processes are so that people have an understanding that this is evolving and that there are more aspects of it that have been tested and understood and it'll make a much easier job for everybody in the community to understand what their expectations should be.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Snimmer.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you very much for the report and presentation. I found it fascinating and full of information, which is always nice, both interesting and full of information is unusual. And I strongly encourage the continued activity of working in the various community, doing community presentations to either neighborhood associations or tenant associations because in the last few emergencies that I've sort of been involved in as a city council member, those groups were really essential to talk to because there's this kind of thing that happens where a small amount of anxiety gets magnified by going around listservs and phone things and so on. It's very hard to interrupt that kind of explosive process. And that's why it's helpful to get a handle on it ahead of time so that folks know who to contact, they know what to do, they know what to expect, they know where to go for information and so on. So I really want to encourage that. And the second thing, I want to second the mayor's, that we do need to have a little bit more conversation about the role of the council in all of this to, because people do come to us with questions and we need to know what to say and what's, what works best and so on. And then the last thing I want to say is I hope you'll consider talking to some of our key businesses. We have a small number of grocery stores and similar kinds of outlets in companies in Tacoma Parks, shops like that that provide food and restaurants. And they become a part of the emergency process too. So if there's, people can't drive, they're going to go to their local corner store if they can. And, you know, there needs to be involvement of them a little bit in are they going to be open? If they're not going to be open, can they put up a sign? You know, how do we deal with things like that? And help them if they need things like the electricity goes out and they're a primary source for food, it's kind of important that we figure out something to help them.
I think it's a very important point you're making and I think we need help with that. It's very difficult to work with the business community.
Yes.
So if anybody can support us in this, it's very welcome.
There's also, I agree with Wolfgang, there's also that fine line, kind of what he mentioned earlier, making sure that we don't overstep our authority.
Right.
And, you know, we're here to help, but we're not trying to push things on.
Yep. Councilmember Schultz.
I want to ask several questions. The first one starts off with the strategic plan. Is it, am I to understand, I just really don't know, what your point was, is that this is something at some point that you would envision the city council adopting by resolution, which could then be amended from year to year as you go forward? Or is it something that you would rather just have as a working document within the context of the emergency preparedness committee?
I think the answer is twofold. Yes, you made a plan for the committee's activities, but you gave us a charge, so you have to say yes, we approve this plan.
Right.
You know, the committee, 10 years is beyond both of us, but there are other people standing here and you have to kind of saying, yes, we want you to do that.
And in that case, then, if we were to do that, then the strategic plan, the 10-year plan, if we were to adopt it, would then become kind of like a policy document for everybody involved.
But it would be adopted year by year changed?
Yeah. Is that, is that what you're sort of thinking you would like to achieve? Okay. With regard to the webpage, would your, do you envision that your part of the web, Tacoma Park City's webpage on emergency preparedness would be something that your committee would be designated to kind of manage and, and modify with, in your discretion as, as members of, as an appointed committee of the city council? Or would changes have to go through the city's webmaster?
Yes, I think it is a city webmaster and we have to work with the person to incorporate what needs to be incorporated.
I see. Okay.
It's a discussion we've had kind of on and off, but never really looked directly at.
I think it's a discussion worth talking about because I think a case could be made one way or the other. I'm not advocating anything. I just think it's something that you might want to think about a little further. Two other points. One has to do with the CERT training. I noticed there's, an email came out today about CERT training that starts, I think, this week. And from my work on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, I'm aware of what it's about. And it's a pretty rigorous thing. It's intense. It takes up half of your Saturdays for four weeks in a row.
Six weeks.
Six weeks in a row and plus Wednesday evenings over that same period of time. And I think, and I think it's great thing. And I think it's, we would all like to see more people in Tacoma Park participate. But two things that I would love to be able to see is that somehow that training be, the timing of the training be spread out so that it's not so intensive. Because appropriately, it says, you know, the person's going to get a certificate at the end. They need to attend all 12 sessions, the Wednesdays and the Saturdays, which is fine. But for most people, they're not going to be able to commit to six consecutive Saturdays.
It can be spread out. There are examples of people who've taken two sections, one part in one section and one part in another section. You have to complete all sections.
Yeah. That would help because someone like myself might be interested in doing it if I could, if I could allocate my time appropriately.
This would be three weeks and three weeks.
Something like that. Yeah. And finally, there used to be something that we talked about in the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee called Safety Contacts, which is an idea that has always appealed to me because we know, we never know what the emergency's going to be, what's going to be the cause of it, or what, and what are going to be the effects of it. Last February, we saw one kind of an emergency. But, you know, there's just all kinds of stuff. And the one, the one thing that we can count on through all of those things is that communications, sustaining communications between citizens and the other, the people who are the helpers, or saviors, or whatever you want to call them, has to be sustained. And of course, if everything's, everybody's on listservs and it's all electronic, then we're extremely vulnerable if power gets lost. So, the idea of the old-fashioned approach of having a certain number of people scattered throughout the city, being designated safety contacts, puts a human element there that can't be disrupted so easily. And I, is that something that, I'll just keep it simple because I don't want to, we can't start a discussion about it now. But is this something that your committee is conscious of or has thought about or, you know?
Let me say three things. Number one, the network of the old safety conduct still exists. And the police department is using it.
They are.
We get word out, for example, to people who are interested through this old network. Number two, the county tried at one time to have neighborhood ready. This means have people trained in each neighborhood who would then work with the neighbors to get, to help them and assist them. This has fallen apart. And it's mainly due to funding. There's no funding available to sustain this. And so, there's not available at present time. It would be great to have that. Anything else?
Well, you know, we've certainly talked a little bit about it in some of our meetings and the outreach to the tenant and neighborhood associations is also going to focus on that a little bit. Part, less specific of designating actual people, but talking and encouraging people to do that. So, it's maybe kind of the newest form of the neighborhood safety contact. And of course, also working with the council to.
Well, thank you for that reply. That's adequate for now. I just want to say that I, I think this is a critical element in continuity so that emergency preparedness can be actually carried out when you need it to be carried out, not, not when you're just doing it for practice. And I, and I would like to help you or talk to you or brainstorm with you on that at some time.
Great.
I'll come to one of your meetings if you want.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank both of you for coming tonight. I thank the other members of the committee. I think at least one or two are here tonight. And I thank you for all the work you've put into this. I'm extremely pleased to see that, hear you tell us that we now have 14 volunteers to be CERT team members that are trained of Tacoma Park residents. And that's a fantastic milestone when we look back at, at the many challenges that you met in trying to get us to that point. And Wolfgang, I take this opportunity to thank you so much for your dedication to this and your persistence in the face of so many setbacks that you had in, in trying to get this committee going and, and being productive through the years. I think you've worked well with Chief Rakucci and Captain Corsi and all the community members. But most importantly, you stuck to it when things didn't, didn't work in the beginning. And I really commend you for that and also thank you so much for that because this is, as you know, I feel, one of the most important tasks that we have in this city. I, I also thank you for being able to hand the baton off to Jennifer and having a community member that can, can take over and move the work forward. And I'm confident that you're going to be a resource that she can depend on as, as she takes the helm and, and keeps pushing the work forward. And Jennifer, I encourage you to, Wolfgang's laid a lot of groundwork here. He helped to build the organization. He has really helped the committee to explore a lot of different ideas. And he's had many false starts on, on good ideas that just didn't pan out in, in when trying to implement them. But now I think you face the challenge of really need to take that plan and hammer it out and actually get the accomplishments of, make those, those plans into reality. And I look forward to your leadership on the committee. And I also offer my assistance in any way that I can or any help that you need from this council will, will support you all the way.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Just quickly, I want to say thank you to Wolfgang for your ongoing leadership and commitment and your doggedness for this issue. And as any great leader, you've, you've set your committee up for success in the future and developed other leaders. And I'm glad to see that the baton is being passed to Jennifer, someone who's capable and will continue to lead the committee in a great way. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Quick, quick echo to what they said.
And then a slightly larger echo. I've got a mayoral proclamation. Appreciation to Wolfgang J. Murgener for his service on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And I'll read it. Whereas the Emergency Preparedness Committee was established in 2004 upon the recommendation of the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, Wolfgang was one of the first members appointed to the committee in 2005. And whereas Wolfgang Murgener has served as community co-chair of the Emergency Preparedness Committee since October 2007. And whereas with his gentle, persistent and quietly creative leadership, the Emergency Preparedness Committee has been able to touch more Tacoma Park residents during his tenure as chairperson than ever before. And whereas Dr. Murgener was one of the first trained CERT members in Tacoma Park, and he was recently responsible for bringing a session of CERT classes from Up County Venue into the Tacoma Park Silver Spring area, providing the opportunity for easier access for city residents. And where he's been active in all aspects of the Emergency Preparedness Committee's programs, including strategic planning, development of communication strategies, conducting outreach at the street festival, folk festival and jazz fest, and has been the writer, producer, director and actor in all of the Emergency Preparedness Committee's public service announcements. And whereas Dr. Murgener has refused to allow the many apartments in the city to go uninformed about emergency preparedness and has especially targeted the senior population for education. And where he's worked tirelessly in the cooperative spirit with many people on city staff in order to improve the state of emergency preparedness of the city government. And whereas he's helped facilitate better communications between the public, community organizations, the city council, city staff and county agencies to improve emergency preparedness of this community. And whereas although he will continue to finish several projects he started with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, Dr. Murgener will be stepping down as an active member of the committee to focus on other important efforts, including mediation and senior programs. Now therefore, I, Bruce R. Williams, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the city council, residents and staff, do hereby proclaim our appreciation, appreciation to Wolfgang J. Murgener for his service to the city and its residents through his work with the Emergency Preparedness Committee dated 24th of January 2011.
Okay. One word? Can I have one more word?
You get rebuttal.
I'd like to thank Captain Corsi for being a very dedicated, very careful partner in this.
And I think there's going to be a brief comment or two from, one comment? Okay.
Yeah, the second one wouldn't be brief. And this is going to be hard to keep this brief.
Okay, here.
But I will.
Timer's going.
Yeah, I got a hammer. I would like to thank Mayor Williams, the city council and Jesse Carpenter, city clerk, for this proclamation, especially with such short notice. And we know whose fault that was. Thank you, Jennifer Kornitis, for your enthusiasm with this proclamation again on such short notice. And to my sister for her help, her computer works. I've known Wolfgang for about 20 years and could spend a long time discussing all of the volunteer committees he has chaired or been a member of. But this is about the Emergency Preparedness Committee and the last six years, three years as a member and three years as co-chair. Wolfgang just has a way of getting things done in his own humble, quiet manner. He has been an absolute pleasure to work with over the years. He deeply cares about everyone, especially the ones who cannot defend themselves or take care of themselves in the event of an emergency situation. But Wolfgang's motto is, the Boy Scouts motto, be prepared. What has always amazed me about Wolfgang is with everything he has accomplished over the years, and that's a tremendous amount when you think about it, how humble he is, how on many occasions he refuses to take any credit when credit is due. As I have said over these years, it has been a pleasure to work with you. Somehow, you keep me focused on the task. I don't know how you do it, but you do. Thank you again, my friend. That's Buddy Daniels, 19 Sherman Avenue. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
Okay. A love fest. We'll now move to our work session item, first one, which is discussion request of Walgreen Company for the abandonment of public right-of-way. And, Miss Danes, are you going to lead us in this discussion?
Good evening. As noted in the cover memorandum that the council received with its package for tonight's meeting, the Walgreen Company has asked the city to consider the abandonment of a series of public rights-of-way or alleyways that bisect their property, which is located at the corner of University and New Hampshire Avenue. There is sort of a rudimentary map attached to your material, which should illustrate the roads that are being proposed or being requested for abandonment. It's basically a stick figure, if you will, or a star in the middle. What they're proposing is that this, in exchange for the abandonment of that, that they would establish a new right-of-way on the easternmost side of their property, which is the area indicated in green. The area that's crosshatched, which is the purple that joins Holton Lane, is a public right-of-way that the city has control over right now. So, basically, if the council were to proceed with, or authorized us to proceed with this request and prepare an application for a mandatory referral review by the planning board, if this were approved, it would allow access from Holton Lane onto University Boulevard. As I indicated in the memorandum, staff is conceptually in support of this, recognizing that there have to be some modifications made to it so that this proposed dedication supports the recommendations of the sector plan. If the council were to support this, we would then go and process the request for abandonment with the Montgomery County Planning Board, which is required by state law, and they would go through a mandatory referral process. There are two different kinds of mandatory referral. There's an administrative review, which is basically for minor types of changes. The other, and that would be done internally with staff. The other type of review is where it would go through the full planning board review. And there would be a series of public meetings or public hearings held in conjunction with that as they make their decision. Their recommendation would then be returned to the city council and you could proceed with action that's, is in compliance with their recommendation, or you can say, thank you very much. We respectfully disagree, if you will, and take an action that's not in, consistent with what the planning board is recommending. We would suggest that the staff, we would suggest that the council authorize us to proceed with that required review by the planning board.
So, the referral is mandatory, but the result, once it comes back to us, it's up to us?
Correct.
And who owns the, it's, it's very clear that the city currently, is own the right word, owns the crosshatched portion. Is the, is the ownership question important for the, for the red star and for the green section?
The city owns the crosshatched portion as you indicated. We own the pink star configuration. The Walgreen Company owns the green strip. There's a small little part that I didn't color in because it was too tiny that we own. But basically, that is their property and that would be what, if we were to abandon the alleyway system, that would be where the right-of-way that they would dedicate to the city to ensure that access through the site would be located.
Right. And the green portion of the map has functioned as an alley, but it's essentially a private alley?
Correct. It's a private street.
Private street. And, and I guess it's currently being used for the, for the construction that's going on, on the adjacent part, so that it's currently not being used as a, as a through.
It's not shut off right now, is it? It's not shut off right now, is it? Mr. Harris is here representing...
Or it was.
Basically, that's the road that people take when they would like to sort of circumvent the lighting system up at University and...
Right.
Or if you need to do a quick run to Tiffin's.
Right.
That's the way you go.
Right, okay. Councilmember Robinson.
I'm sure we'll hear more about the plans, but if they, if we abandon the red area, does that mean that they can reconfigure that section in any way they choose, with or without those current alleys?
Correct. It would give them the authority or the responsibility for maintaining the alleyway system, which the city currently does not do. It would allow them to undertake some security measures that they feel are important to maintain the viability of those commercial areas. For example, this short right-of-way just runs up between a series of buildings. It doesn't go anywhere, and they would like to block that off because there are a lot of people that kind of hang out back there. If this, so if this property were abandoned, they would assume full responsibility for it.
If our current alleys that we do maintain, did you say that we do not maintain them?
We do not maintain.
So they belong to us, but we do not maintain them. They maintain them currently.
No one really maintains them.
No one maintains them.
Yeah.
Okay. We have the option of maintaining them since they're ours.
Correct. Is my understanding that they are currently not in the schedule that the city council and the city have been using to make roadway improvements? So there may be periodic maintenance of the alleys, but there's no plan to improve them, upgrade them?
Right. The whole area is ostensibly going to be improved and upgraded, that may be improved and upgraded, particularly given that the purple lines coming right down that stretch if it ever gets built.
That's our plan and hope, yeah.
Okay.
So by abandoning these right-of-ways, it also gives them an opportunity to evaluate the site for other potentially larger redevelopment properties.
I see. Thank you.
Councilmember Clay.
I was next.
Well, I didn't see him come on in whatever order. Councilmember Schultz.
I was the one who went first.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I wanted to ask you about the green strip. If this were to go through, does the sector plan envision that that would, and I realize the sector plan hasn't been adopted, but as it stands right now, envision that that complete, that hole, which now is sort of an alley, be upgraded into, say, a street that would be regularly maintained by the city and might have a curb on it, or other things that make it look like an actual street as opposed to an alley that's just sort of happens, people happen upon... I mean, right now, people sort of say, "Oh, look, if you go down here, you can get through and sneak around." It's kind of like an illicit arrangement. And I'm wondering if, what the sector plan would suggest for that.
The sector plan identifies that general alignment as a business street and recommends a right-of-way of 70 feet, and if, as the area is redeveloped, that the street be improved to include the streetscape improvements that you're talking about, curb, gutter...
Stormwater.
Stormwater, a real street rather than a narrow one.
I see.
Its alignment, however, is one of the issues that would have to be evaluated as we pursue this request. And in anticipation of that issue coming up, we've made a, we're working on setting up a meeting with the planning staff and the planning, or the transportation engineer to see how this proposal might work with the sector plan. That would be one of the considerations that the planning board or its staff would, one of the criteria that they would use to review the request.
I would sort of like to note, as a follow-up to Councilman Robinson's comments, that the abandonment of these rights-of-ways, such as they are, will allow the Walgreens ownership to have a lot more flexibility in designing and creating a useful, productive, and attractive site, and thereby, by doing, it really does probably enhance the value of what they have there, because if they have had to otherwise work and guarantee the existence of these rights-of-way always, it would just simply make things a little more complicated and less flexible. And finally, the other comment I would make is that I do think, I strongly support that this go through the full planning board evaluation, because we don't have an adopted sector plan at this time, and we don't want to get ahead of ourselves by doing something at this point. And we don't have a CR zoning adopted yet. All of this has to be considered in concert. It seems very logical for me that that administrative process through the planning board would be the best way to do it, and then it comes back to us ultimately to pull the trigger, or not.
Correct. And once it comes back to the city council, then you go through your own series of notification requirements, public hearing, and the community is given an opportunity to comment on the proposal at that time. So there is, it's a two-tiered, two-tiered review. And I agree with Mr., or Councilmember Schultz, that it undoubtedly will go before planning board review as opposed to administrative review.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I just follow up on what you were just saying? We would have a process when it comes back to us. How, will that process be potentially duplicative with what the planning board might be doing as part of mandatory referral? Will they be gathering information or from other agencies at that point? Will we be, how does that divide out?
It could be somewhat duplicative in terms of community comment or public comment. The difference might be if they were to make a recommendation to take one action and the city council elected not to proceed with that recommendation, so you'd be looking at a totally different project. But there would be duplication as far as the approach of soliciting input and having, giving the public an opportunity to comment on it.
So doing this kind of guarantees more opportunities for input from the public or other entities?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. I just have a few comments. First is that we're not required to maintain the right-of-way in a paved status or any kind of a status, right? We don't have to pave it, or it's just our right-of-way.
I don't know the answer to that question.
We have other right-of-ways that's not paved in the city, which I'm going to speak without shortly.
That's my understanding. And I, my sense is that you're correct, but I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. The second one is that I would assume that if we gave this up, that there would be a loss of access, and I wouldn't necessarily assume that the Walgreens company would maintain it as access way, but would create, just fold it into part of their large lot plan, so...
Mr. Harris might be able to address this better than I, but my understanding is that they're not proposing to make any significant changes to access to their site or the commercial entities that are located in their existing facility.
At this time.
At this time.
Right.
However, as the economy changes or their interests change and they redevelop this site, by abandoning the alleyway system, it gives them a greater flexibility, as Councilmember Schultz indicated, to look at how the site might be best used for larger or differently massed redevelopment opportunities, which would then potentially cut, limit access on and off the site, but it may not be as relevant.
Right. I'm just pointing out that if we give it up, we should assume the loss of access, and then this could be one, large property which may look like a huge mass with no breaks in the wall, or might look like, you know, a small village, but there's a, there's, in maintaining, you don't have to comment on it, I'm just saying, in maintaining the right-of-way, you force it to remain in chunks of property, which dictates what you can do in terms of the scale and the look of the property. So that was point number two. See, point number three is, it looks like it's about a three-to-one exchange of actual square footage of land space with us giving up three times as much as we get.
Yes, that's, however, if you note that the green area is a 20-foot right-of-way, the cross-hatched is a 30-foot right-of-way, and the plan itself recommends a 70-foot right-of-way.
A what?
A 70-foot right-of-way for a business street. So that is one of the things that would have to be worked out either internally by city staff or eventually, or presumably through the planning board and its staff, as it looks at how this proposal corresponds with the sector plan and its recommendations. Right now, it is a very narrow right-of-way. It's a very narrow road. And so if you're looking at the numbers as far as the square footage that they're proposing to dedicate to the city, my assumption is that that's going to change, because that is to, the right-of-way they're proposing does not correspond with the recommendations that the sector plan is currently presenting.
Right. Well, and a 70-foot right-of-way that ran from Holton Lane to University would be a game-changer for all of the other little businesses that are along Holton Lane. It would bring a lot more people driving past those businesses as they went to avoid the, I think relatively functional turn at the corner of New Hampshire and University Boulevard.
But there are changes proposed in the sector plan that would mitigate some of that in terms of a light potentially being established at that access to University Boulevard, a variety of different configurations that may prevent some of that taking place. The right-of-way and the street improvements would not actually be implemented until the property is redeveloped at a larger scale than would be anticipated in the next five years.
Well, I didn't assume that it was a bad thing. I just meant that, you know. So next point, don't assume that the green area is a good deal, because we're not paying to maintain the right-of-way currently, but if we're looking at this and thinking, "Oh, look, that's a roadway from Holton Lane to University," then we have to maintain it. And if it's, becomes Walgreens' principal access and they're driving heavy trucks on it, we're going to be spending money to support their heavy truck delivery road, and I'm not sure that I am excited about that.
Good point.
Actually, I'm sure that I'm not excited. I am sure that I am not excited about that. And my last comment is related to the other right-of-way issue that has been sort of sitting around in my ward as long as I've been a council member, and that is the right-of-way, the right-of-way between Colby and Aspen Avenue that was a longstanding issue and which is not paved and which runs immediately adjacent to, like, the corner of a house essentially, isn't used, is fenced over. The fencing that was installed was kind of part of a, of a, of a plan that was put forth with Public Works and the city and the property owners to help stop the drug trafficking that was going back and forth between all the things happening in Aspen Court Apartments and Colby Avenue. And those folks have been waiting and waiting and waiting for the city to take an action on their right-of-way, and have been told, I mean, from, I haven't really gotten a response from a current mayor, but, you know, the last mayor said essentially that they, she would support releasing that right-of-way when we had an alternative right-of-way from Cherry to Aspen Court, which we were going to get from the Montgomery County Capital Improvement Plan, when they were going to build that $300,000, 100-foot sidewalk along Slywa Creek Parkway, but then left the, so it's a long story. But the point is that here, you know, we've got this Walgreens thing, and we have a map, and we have a proposal to go forward, and gee, it would be really great if, while we're doing this, we could just fill out a similar proposal, probably just an administrative review to address this issue of the Colby to Aspen right-of-way, which is now essentially encapsulated in somebody's yard through fencing and is, for all intents and purposes, abandoned anyway.
I'm not familiar with it specifically, but I can work with the city manager to see what is appropriate.
It's been that long. It was an issue when I ran for office.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It was an issue long before that.
Well, yes, there's the lady who apparently perished of angst over the battle between the neighbors about whether or not she could walk her dog through the property.
Who was an MNCCP planner.
Was she? So, anyway. So, yeah, we've got this great map and everything. God, should be neat to resolve this Colby and Aspen right-of-way problem while we're at it.
And I'll just point out what I hope seems obvious, which is there hasn't been a response from this mayor, because nobody's asked this mayor for a response. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I'd just like to take a moment to thank Walgreens representative for the company's interest in this area of Tacoma Park and for the potential of planned development in that area sometime in the near future. I just real quickly comment, I think that it's obvious that to be workable and to be acceptable, there would have to be a 70-foot right-of-way through there, and it seems simple to just kind of propose at that level, and then things would go through a little more smoothly. I would just ask that city staff check with our police department on this, because I know that they might have some opinions about traffic flow and also about public safety and crime in that area and how this might affect that. I suspect it would be supportive of the request from Walgreens, but I would like to certainly hear from the police department before making a decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
So I just want to understand, does Walgreens own all the way from Holton Lane to University Boulevard, or what's the actual, what properties do they own here?
They own the property on, all the property that shows up on this map. So they own the property that the post office is located on, the car wash, and then across the street.
So they own on both sides of Holton Lane?
Yeah, not all the way down, but right where is the easy storage building is, that's the rough boundary on that end.
But they do own all the way from Holton Lane to University Boulevard. This is my concern, is that it feels a little bit like maybe we're doing this before it's necessary. Like, I totally get that if Walgreens wanted to redevelop the site, they don't want roads running through the middle of it. So at that point, with an understanding of what they actually wanted to develop there, I think I'd be like more open to turning it over based on the city understanding that and having some agreement and some leverage on what those buildings we're building would look like, the design details, because even with the zoning rules, there's a lot of choices that can happen there that we probably have, when they get to, like, if they're building by right, there's very little, probably the city, not very little, there's limits on how much the city, input the city would have. And so I would be more interested in saying, "Hey, Walgreens, yeah, we're happy to turn this over to, at which point you want to develop the site, but we'd like to understand what that site development looks like." Right now, it seems like sort of we're giving them, we're just writing them a blank check. I mean, we're just letting them say, "Okay, yeah, you can have this for free," and we're not really getting anything out of the situation. So I don't quite see why we'd do it. Unless you're saying they're going to pay us for this. We do have budget issues, that'd be a little different.
I can't respond to the question about the timing of their request. I can address the concerns regarding what the eventual redevelopment project could look like. Part of the sector plan process is the development of design guidelines or design standards, which they are working on now, and I believe a rough draft is available or will be available on February 3rd. be available, on February 3rd. Um, and that, that will become more public as the planning staff at the county level finalizes that or fine-tunes it a bit. So, it won't address your specific question right now about why they need to have it now.
So why do they need to have it?
But for future, why do they need to have it now?
Anne, if you can just introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, I'm Bob Harris of Holland and Knight, representing Walgreens. Uh, I'm not a current resident of Tacoma Park, but there was a day when I was, it's been some time since, but the first time I've appeared before you, so let me try to answer a few of the questions, uh, for you. Um, the, the whole inquiry was really triggered by the problem with loitering and crime in part of that alley system, where it's hidden and out of sight, and Walgreens wanted to clean that up, uh, so that their store will, will do as well, and that the rest of the shopping center won't suffer from that any longer. Uh, as a public road, they can't fence it off now, they can't, uh, control it the way they could if it were, uh, back to their private property. And so, excuse me, that's what's triggering it. They have no plans to change any of the alley configuration in the near term, uh, other than the one dead-end alley that points out towards the intersection of, uh, University and New Hampshire. That's the one where the main problem is. Uh, but, uh, the sector plan about which you've been hearing, uh, has, uh, a vision for a reconfigured road system throughout that block to provide, uh, to answer, uh, Councilmember Clay's question, internal circulation and access, but those roads are in different locations than where these alleys are. So, uh, assuming that sector plan gets adopted, at some point in time, these alleys will not function the way they are today, but they, they would remain open today. The, uh, Walgreens believes this is a good deal for the city and for them, yes, it's in their interest, or they wouldn't be proposing it, but right now, the city is not maintaining those alleys, and they're not in good shape, but on the other hand, Walgreens doesn't have the authority to go in and repave a public alley, um, any more than it can go repave any other public street. Um, it, um, it would take over the maintenance and would improve the conditions of those alleys in the meantime, so that they would function better for everybody, and would be on their nickel, not on the city's, uh, nickel. Um, the, um, uh, as far as the 70-foot, um, um, configuration, right now, that could not be provided, because in order to put that in, it would disrupt the parking that's necessary, but clearly, that is the expectation when the, um, the assemblage does redevelop in a more complete manner sometime down the road. So, um, I, did I answer the questions, sir, that were being posed?
I have other questions, I don't think they're for you, but I appreciate.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for letting me comment.
Um, so, it, it sounds like the biggest issue is, they, they would like control over the alleys, or there's an issue, um, related to loitering and the quality of the alleys, and one way to deal with that is for us to, to do this trade, but it also, I would reiterate, despite unknown design guidelines, would give us more leverage around, uh, at the point at which they would want to redesign this property. Another solution would be that Walgreens could simply make a donation to the city, we could repave the roads, and, uh, it is the city roads, we could have an agreement on what sort of limited access we would allow, um, uh, and, and construct them in a way that we think would address the loitering issue, which I'm sure, sure the police department would be, would be okay with as well, if it really addressed, addressed the problem, and we would still retain ownership. Um, so that's my, I think my perspective at this point. Um, my understanding is that, just so I'm clear on this, if we vote to, to ask the planning board to look at this, it still comes back to us, and we could, we're basically getting advice from them, experienced planners, which is always a good thing, um, and then we could choose to, to not turn it over if we wanted to at that point, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seaman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, that's, uh, been very helpful and answered my, um, other questions. The one question I have remaining is an irreverent one, suggested by, um, a constituent, which concerned, um, why leave one wall, which was not even a whole wall, and why not tear it down completely?
That is rhetorical.
And you're talking about the, the currently being redeveloped Walgreens building?
Yeah.
The building permit that was issued for that particular property required that some percentage of the facility remain intact. So it's a permitting issue, um, which is why they left the one building.
Makes it a renovation instead of a new construction.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a renovation.
Changes the permit.
Very clever, that's why we have lawyers to figure these things out.
Um, Councilmember Schultz and Councilmember Clay both want to have additional questions.
Uh, just, just one, is it possible to allow Walgreens to have a, essentially a revocable permit to block the dead-end alleyway?
I believe that is an option, that if you wanted to, um, do sort of an interim approach to address their immediate concerns regarding the security, again, along that shortest of the alleyways, that might be feasible.
Councilmember Schultz.
Just an, just an observation, that, uh, of the five alleyways that are shown in red, the, the vertical one at the top, and the horizontal one that it connects to, the horizontal, the, is, gives, uh, access to the drive-in window that Walgreens has or is installing at the back of its new building, for the benefit of people who come by to pick up pharmacy or drop-off, uh, pharmacy, uh, um, requests. Uh, and so that, in the near term, or maybe even the long term, that may, that, that little, those, those two access points, well, at least the one behind the Walgreens, running, um, horizontal, is going to have to remain there, in any case, or otherwise, that, uh, drive-in window would have to be abandoned. So, um, and for the near term, as long as the buildings that face University remain there, then the only access to the back of the Walgreens building, um, would be that vertical alley off of University, because it's, right now, that's a one-way, uh, entrance that allows traffic to come off of University and go around to the back of the Walgreens, is that not correct?
It would be the only public access.
The only public access, yeah, I guess that's what I mean.
Yeah, because there's still the road, um, there's still the, the route that people are using, um, that's currently in green on the map.
Right. But it's typical of drive-ins, is that there's a one-way access to a drive-in, you can't go into, say, a McDonald's and order a burger from the other side of your car.
True.
So it kind of has to be sustained that way for the foreseeable future, until, until the major redevelopment occurs.
Right.
I'm just trying to think this thing through. Okay. Yet, another option, of course, that might be considered, is to, is to, to proceed with the abandonment, let's say, and then, but also require Walgreens, as a condition, to provide the city an access easement for the duration of the time until the actual rede- the major redevelopment starts, and that way, we could all be, uh, certain that these alleys, uh, except for the one that would be stubbed off, would, would stay in place, if, if that would give somebody more comfort. I'm not saying that this, we should do, just, just a, an idea.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilmember Robinson.
Um, process question. Um, it says under the background that we're required to submit the proposal to the planning board for, for review. Are we, we're, are we required, we're not required to unless we choose to?
Is my understanding correct?
So we could choose not to, and then it would be in limbo? That's one option that we have.
You could choose not to proceed with the request, then it wouldn't require going through mandatory referral, and it would be, a decision, a decision is made and it just stops there.
What decision is made?
A deci-, the decision that the council would make not to proceed with the request. So, they've requested this, and you say, "No, we don't want it," then it would just stop there, it wouldn't go to mandatory.
Okay. If we, if we, um, if we pass it on, does that mean that we approve it?
No.
Okay. Does there, is there anything that is interpreted as, as though we approve it, or do we, can we pass it on with no opinion? Or is it, or is that what?
That's, that's what we.
Is that assumed? Is it assumed, or we would do it, uh, you say, "We have no opinion on this, we want you to look at it," and then if, if they came, they would come back with some opinion, which we would then review, so we would be reviewing their opinion?
Mm-hmm.
Or we could give it to them with an opinion?
The, I haven't looked at the, um, application materials, but I do not believe there's any formal action or endorsement or position required by the part of the, the city when it forwards on for mandatory referral.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just, uh, like to say that, kind of, tell you where I'm coming from on this, I'm really thrilled that, uh, companies such as Walgreens is interested in, uh, looking at redeveloping this property, and I want, uh, I hope we can be as supportive of this as necessary, uh, while still protecting the interests of the residents of Tacoma Park and taxpayers in Tacoma Park. I think, you know, if we have additional expenses for infrastructure in the future because of, uh, excess of use, I'm hopeful that that is much more than compensated for by increases in taxes that we realize from the thriving businesses that, uh, the developer will bring to this area. Um, I would just like to, uh, suggest that we move forward with this at this time, um, think about including as a contingency, um, a, a commitment by Walgreens to abandon the, uh, the 70 feet or whatever it is that it takes to, uh, complete the project in the future, but that we move forward tonight and ask for that, uh, review by the planning board.
And we have that, uh, it's not a motion, but it's a suggestion by Councilmember Siemens, um, so, I'll just look to see if people want to go ahead and, uh, have this proceed to mandatory referral with the full knowledge that it will come back to us for the decision, rather than a decision from park and planning. Yes? Okay. We're happy with going to mandatory referral.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, as well.
And we'll take a short break and come back for our last item, which is a discussion of council priorities regarding the recommendations of the task force on environmental action.
Or sign up online at WSSCwater.com.
And remember, a little change can make a big difference.
Clerk provided us with a nice form for, uh, possible use in identifying our priorities. Councilmember Clay, uh, provided her recommendations, Councilmember Wright had previously supplied his. Um, I would propose that we, uh, take a few minutes to go through the task force's high priority recommendations, and kind of give our, our, at this point, uh, hopefully final version of our response to those high priority recommendations, and then, uh, take a look at whatever else we want to look at, and see if we can come up with some, uh, direction to the city manager, which she will then, uh, use as she is preparing the budget, and we will have a chance to, uh, provide our feedback to the city manager on how any, uh, proposed expenses for environmental actions would feed into next year's budget, as she puts it together, and we'll have that opportunity on, is it February 14th? Either the city manager or the city clerk, is it the, February 14th where it's our feedback to the city manager on budget, and it's, that's the opportunity to, uh, provide direction to you on our sense of what we would like to see you include in your proposed budget, uh, kind of measuring new initiatives versus, uh, existing or whatever else. So, tonight is not necessarily, gee, the, we can't do it because there's no budget, tonight is, what are the priorities so that we can, uh, feed it, work it into the budget in our request for budget in three weeks?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, um, I don't have paper copies of things, I'm following along online, so should I be following along on the TFBA final action report, or are we going to work off of that directly, or are we going to work off the summary of the staff comments on the recommendations contained in the task force?
I was thinking we were going to work off of the, uh, shortened version that the city clerk emailed, what, like, last week?
Yes, um, I think, actually, I'd emailed it, Jesse had prepared it, um, she is going to, to make some extra copies.
I can pull that up.
Oh, she's, she's going to make a couple copies.
Oh, that'd be good, because I don't have one.
Uh, so it.
Well, too bad you didn't bring your computer.
Yeah.
Or your portable printer. So the, uh, the first three pages of that document have the task force's high priority recommendations. And, shall we just go through those real quick, so that we have a sense of, uh, where we are on each of those? The, uh, first one, which was the, uh, city should commit sufficient staff, including hire a sustainability coordinator to coordinate the city's efforts, and committing sufficient budget resources to implement the recommendations in the plan, that was the overarching one. Uh, and I know Councilmember Wright had proposed that we do that, uh, how do, how do folks feel about, uh, a hiring a sustainability coordinator, kind of timeframe ASAP, dependent on budget? How do folks feel? Um, Councilmember Clay.
I think it's clear to me that if we're going to move forward with any of these items in a significant way, especially the things like the purchase of the streetlights or solar cooperatives, or some of the more complex pieces, which I think also were some of the pieces that are the most likely to, um, generate some, some long-term. pieces that are the most likely to generate some long-term savings. And I think are, many of them are sort of the bigger pieces around the carbon footprint and those environmental goals that were after. Somebody's going to have to do all, do the legwork for that essentially. And that's going to have to, I think that has to be a staff person or someone linked into the staff, which means that it needs to be a position that we have. I thought for a while about whether or not, you know, could somebody do this part-time? And looking at all of the different things that people are talking about, I thought probably not. And then I think it's a question of, so, you know, do you add a staff member? Do you give up something else that we're doing to do this? But I think if we're going to be serious about doing this in a meaningful way and to capture the bigger benefits, we're going to have to commit a staff resources to it.
Councilmember Snipper.
Couldn't have said it better. I agree thoroughly.
Councilmember Wright.
Fair.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, I agree. I just, my gut tells me that they can find enough to pay their way, enough in savings. And the one thing we need to do most, from my perspective, is to cut down on use of energy, turn lights off and beyond, far beyond that. I agree.
Councilmember Schultz.
I disagree. And the reason I do, this has nothing to do with the merits of the recommendation. It has to do with the fact that I don't see how, I think we're diluting ourselves and diluting or fooling the members of the environmental task force by adopting this as something that we want to do first and foremost, when in fact we're going to be facing a budget-stuff situation that may require us to lay off more city employees than we've already laid off. Not saying that it will, but no one can say that it won't. And for us to be establishing the premise that we're going to hire at our earliest possible opportunity a sustainability coordinator, when in fact we name it, how to be able to afford to keep the staff that we have, I think, is shortsighted. And again, it makes me feel that every time that good ideas come before the city council, we all get excited about the goodness of the idea. And so, well, we can afford to do that. We'll figure it out somehow. But all of these things, whether it's this or whether we're eliminating gasoline-powered leaf blowers and obligating our staff to do all their work with rakes, all of these ideas, which are good ideas. There's nothing wrong with this idea. It's a fabulous idea that the environmental task force has come forward with. But all of them cost money. And we're going to have less money this coming fiscal year, which means that less is going to get done. It's not a question of are being able to do more with less, as is oftentimes. We've passed that point. It's not even a question of being able to do what we can even now with less. We're going to be doing less with less. And we've already experienced that. And I just, I just think that, notwithstanding the merits of this idea, which I support, I just don't think we should be saying that this is what we're going to do as our high priority recommendation, number one. I think it's something we can say that we want to do and we would like to be able to do it, but it might not happen for a year or two or maybe even three. That I would support, but I just, I think we need to be, put some of those caveats onto that recommendation, onto that suggestion.
And I would say that, for the most part, I agree with Councilmember Schultz. I would say that I feel like having a sustainability coordinator is going to be key to making some of the advances that I think we all want to make. And I really would like to find a way to make that possible. There may be some roadblocks to that that we will have to face as part of integrating it into whatever the proposed and adopted budget for next year is. I think some of those are still not clear to us, and we'll have to face that. But I do want to emphasize that I think that having this, having a position like this will be key to making a bunch of these other recommendations happen.
I agree that it will be key to doing, but exactly what you said. I just think we need to be thoughtful about the fact that it's not going to be easy. And I hope we can find other means to do it. But that also understand that means that there's something else that we're now doing that we will have to stop doing.
Right.
And I think if we don't say that, then this budget game that we're practicing now with some of our citizens is not, is not, we're not even paying the attention to the budget game ourselves. People don't know what I'm talking about. I'm sorry, but that's, you know, they're trade-offs. So, I'm all in favor of this, but just with those understandings on the record.
Councilmember Wright.
I just want to be clear. I think that I've been, and others have been incredibly thoughtful about it. To say that, like, because you're not committing to one thing, you're being thoughtful about the budget process, I think is just ridiculous. I've been incredibly thoughtful about it. To me, it depends on what the priority is for you. And for me, and I think many of my council colleagues, there is no more waiting. There is not another year. There's not another two years or another three years. The fierce urgency of now related to environmental issues, particularly climate change, is upon us now. And every year that we wait, even as small as our city is, is another year we're behind with the issue. And to me, it's saying, yes, we may have to make a trade, we don't know, we're not, we haven't looked at all the budget numbers yet. But it's saying, we are committing to a set of actions. We're committing, and this is why I think we should actually talk about what the budget number is. We're committing one cent on the tax rate, just to this. Wait about all the other decisions we have to make. We're going to move forward to that. That maybe means some tough decisions in other areas. It may not. We don't know totally all the aspects of the budget. We've recently learned, or at least I've learned, that there's other uses for the speed camera money than building sidewalks, which is what we've basically been doing with it. So, I think you have to put a stake in the ground. To me, this is the most important, one of the most important things we can do. And I disagree that every idea that comes along, at least I have not said, every idea that comes along said, "Hey, that's great. I want to fund that." And that's why I think that we have to commit now. And the sustainability coordinator is likely actually to pay for themselves if part of their time is focused on the right things related to that. And I don't see how we can move forward with many of these things without that additional staff person focused on it. And it's, they're not going to be able to do the Pepco light situation by themselves. But they will be able to help us engage experts, including citizens on the task force for the environment who are anxious to do additional work if it's targeted, directed, and clear that there can be a positive outcome.
Can I suggest that we, as a body, agree that a, an environmental coordinator is a key element to making a lot of this stuff happen? It's something that we want to see happen as soon as we can, and we'll have to understand the budget implications as we go through the budget process. But that we're going to be wanting to tell the city manager that this is key. Let us know what would be required to make it happen. Does that seem like a reasonable way to proceed at this point?
Even that, or amended to say that this is conditional on one cent increase in the property tax, because that was Josh, Councilman Wright's suggestion some time ago.
And I wasn't...
I was somewhat facetious when I say that, because that's...
I don't think we need to go there yet. I think if we just, if the city manager knows that this is going to be a priority, how we do that in the context of the budget remains to be seen. Okay. Then there's the energy and climate change section with the purchasing of streetlights from Pepco, the greenhouse gas inventory and monitoring plan, the shared energy efficiency upgrades and renewable energy purchasing, and establishing landlord incentives for building improvements. And if I can just offer up one thing on the purchasing of streetlights from Pepco, there are a couple of us, I believe, one, two, three, four of us were at the Montgomery, Prince George's joint chapter meeting last week in Kensington. We had a short agenda item during that meeting on an update about where things were with Pepco. And I think one of the instructive things was hearing from Councilmember Alan Proctor from, I'm going to get this wrong, Somerset, I think. And it, there was some good information that was shared there as far as what's going on now with municipalities and Pepco and the Public Service Commission, and how Pepco has been assigning costs to various maintenance issues. And kind of all of that is shifting. It might be helpful at some point if we had a memo from him or a briefing or whatever it might be, whatever seems most appropriate, to get kind of the update from somebody who has been very closely involved in monitoring kind of all issues Pepco. So, I'll just put that out there, that if that seems valuable, that's something that I could request if that's what folks want to do. Because I thought with the streetlight purchase from Pepco, my sense is that a lot of people think that would be a really good idea in the long run, that would save us money. It might not be something that is immediate because of some of the issues surrounding what's going on with Pepco. But that if we become more engaged in that, we may be able to more closely jump on an opportunity when it seems appropriate. There were also some folks at that meeting who said, "Well, gee, I don't care about this. We already own all our streetlights, like Bowie." So, we could find out from them how they made that happen.
Wasn't MML doing some legal research on this issue? Or wasn't there some resource they were dedicating to trying to figure this out?
It, I'm not sure. What I do know is that both the Montgomery and Prince George's chapters dedicated some money to having an attorney deal with rate case issues. But I'm not sure about what MML is doing about, because my sense is that probably not, because MML would deal with statewide issues and Pepco isn't a statewide issue. So, I think it was more the two chapters that were doing it. And we had an update on that as well.
I think that was like 15 grand from MML, from the Montgomery chapter. Was that for the rate?
1,500, for the rate case.
For the rate case, okay.
So, I just wanted to share that information on the Pepco piece. Do people want to prioritize the pieces in this area? Comments? Councilmember Schultz.
Well, yeah, I would like to give a higher priority to this goal of purchasing streetlights from Pepco. The evidence that I've heard from people, like particularly at the fall MML conference, suggests that there's a lot of economies that can be obtained if it's done right. There's a certain amount of pitfalls of how not to do it, but it would give us control over our energy usage, the ability to install LED lights, which are starting to come online in various municipalities in the state. Outdoor lamps, though, that are just as bright as the conventional ones. You can't even tell the difference hardly. I just think there's a potential for significant savings, year after year after year.
And there was a pilot sample of LED streetlight a block from the Kensington Town offices. So, if anybody wanted to see what that is, there's one up there at the corner of, I want to say Everett and...
Next to the Safeway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we looked at it, on the way out, Dan and I.
Good.
If you didn't know it was an LED, you wouldn't know it.
Couldn't tell, really. If we were even looking at the right one. Yeah. Which one is it? They said it was that one.
Well, you probably know you had the right one if it was a lot of little...
You could know they were pointed up or whatever, you know.
Oh, okay. Up? I hope not.
Well, it had a globe and a cap, which is how all of the streetlights in that, along that street are set up. And however it is diffused, you just couldn't tell. It wasn't a pointing down of the little showerhead LEDs that we were looking at.
Okay. So, people feel that pursuing purchase of streetlights is a priority? Councilmember Robinson.
I think it's a priority to look at it. I remember speaking with Daryl Braithwaite about it, and she had a couple of misgivings, largely due to the pace at which the Public Service Commission was willing to, was that who it is? I think who, the person, the people who review Pepco's policies on this. And she was not heartened by their actions nor by Pepco's actions. So, it looked grim, but that was a couple of years ago, and things may change. This is the kind of thing that, if I've got that right, Daryl. But this is the kind of thing that, you know, is always worth a review. And if a sustainability coordinator does get into place, maybe that person could work with Daryl to, and with MML and so forth, to make sure that we're completely informed and to help us jump on it if it does become something that's financially viable. So, I'm in favor of the priority. I just don't know whether it'll work out.
Right. So, we want to basically say, yes, this is our priority. And the greenhouse gas inventory and monitoring plan. And I'll just make one observation on this one. Maybe Daryl can correct me if I'm wrong. But my sense is that the inventory and the monitoring plan was something that we wanted to do in the 2000 local action plan. And my recollection is that there were a fair number of difficulties in making that happen. Maybe you can just say something briefly about whether that is or isn't the case, your sense of the feasibility of this, again, to remind us.
Sure. There's probably been some progress since we were involved in it for the original evaluation. At that time, there was, it was hypothetical in nature. There was limited information that we could get from the utilities. The actual ZIP code information was very restricted. I think the utilities probably loosened up a little bit at that time, but we may still run into same issues where you can't get actual usage data. So, you just have to hypothesize based on the best information you have and using software that ICLI and other organizations develop. So, that was the problem that we had then, that there's real limits on the actual information that you can get from the utilities. We could get very accurate information on the city facility use because we have those invoices. But for the community as a whole and for the business area as a whole, it got into some theorizing and hypothetical evaluation. Same could be true of the transportation issues, which, you know, if you're looking at greenhouse gas emissions, you look at the whole picture. And the difficulty of capturing that ends up being kind of a scientific pursuit that gets you pretty deep into the minutia at some point. I know that COG has been doing some look at this and trying to coordinate across jurisdictions and trying to get general information. Montgomery County has done this. So, you know, it may be that what's the most efficient thing for the city to do is take a look at what Montgomery County has generated for themselves, particularly per capita type generation, and agree to make some assumptions about we're using similar figures based on our population and housing stock. So, it may be that we extrapolate from existing reports that are already there. I think the one question that I have in this is sort of what's the goal? What's the purpose? How refined and accurate do the numbers have to be if they're the driver for decisions as to what you then do? I don't think that we'll... city, and the one at least that we have the least control over because of the network of roadways. So part of my concern is just it could take a lot of time and effort, and once we have the new emissions data, does that drive or change our decisions any? Or does a more general extrapolated information based on surrounding counties and what others of cities have found when they did their emissions inventory, would that be sufficient? So that's something that perhaps can be debated within council once, you know, we move forward on this. Just how fine a point do we want to put on it, and why?
Yeah, because I asked the question just because my sense was that on the surface it seems like, ooh, good, yes, we want to do that, but how much are we going to get out of it? Is it going to end up feeling like we've made an empty promise that this is really important, and it's really good, and we're not going to get much? It's going to kind of be a repeat of what we did in 2000?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Councilmember Wright?
My inclination also is that this does feel like a little second order because of those, unless someone can tell us that there, it's fairly minutia, it can get down to the fairly detailed minutia pretty easily. It feels like, in theory, you want to, yeah, let's measure so we can know if we get better, but unless it can really account for the fact that, you know, people in Tacoma Park are, you know, drive, there's 50% higher likelihood that they drive Priuses versus SUVs or something, or that their electricity use is actually better because they've installed solar panels, or they've weatherized their houses, or what they've done, I think it's a little bit hard. So I put it sort of at second order unless someone can, either through COG, or maybe there's some new tools that would allow us to measure it in a more granular way than kind of knowing how we would measure up based on some averages of the county, or averages of the region.
Councilmember Robinson?
It crosses my mind, as I heard Darrell talk, and also Josh, that maybe we need a different kind of monitoring system so that when the sustainability coordinator's in place, she can set up certain criteria for making decisions, and working with Darrell, I'm sure, to show how much energy the city is using, for example. I wouldn't mind seeing a graph showing how our energy use in this building, for example, has gone year by year, and what efforts we're making to reduce energy use in this building as an example. And that's the kind of analysis I'd love to see coming out as a kind of an inventory and monitoring plan, not necessarily greenhouse gas, because I agree that maybe we can piggyback on the county's efforts or other things. But an inventory and monitoring plan, I think, is a good idea, regardless of how it's done, and we might be able to make it specific for our needs.
And I believe that information for this building is available, correct, Darrell? Councilmember Clark?
I don't feel like it has to be this specific thing, but I think that the sentiment is that we need to have some way to evaluate what our impact is, and use that in our policy and decision-making activities. So I would agree, we don't have to have a highly technical, really expensive monitor in front of everybody's house, but we have some baseline information. We can use some information, for example, as the arborist got from the satellite around tree coverage, and what that means for those things, and kind of do the best we can with the information that is readily available. And I think the more important point that the task force was making, that we then actually use that information to an end. And that's the part of it that I support. So it wouldn't have to be this particular thing, but that we take the information that we have, we improve it, and we use it to an end, to change the way that we're doing things, to better our position.
So a sense that it doesn't have to be this, but it can be a little, it's not top-top priority, but it's something that we want to come up with a good way to measure our Shared Energy Efficiency Upgrades and Renewable Energy Purchasing? My sense is that people will, that all of us will say, yes, that's a priority?
Bruce, can you answer a question for me? Because I think you have the history on this. This idea that we would enable a third-party supplier to sell energy, is that, the thing was we couldn't have a municipal electrical entity, right? But you could have a third-party aggregator who sold something in the city, or got us the efficiency of houses purchasing together if they wanted to, correct?
I believe so.
So you could have like the Co-op version of the energy purchase, in a sense?
Right. And the effort a couple of years ago by MML, the priority was trying to get the opt-out municipal aggregation--
Right.
--which was unsuccessful. Landlord incentives for building improvements. Councilmember Snipper?
I should let Colleen talk about her idea, but--
No, go ahead.
I like the idea of having, more generally, the idea of a revolving loan fund for energy-efficient buildings, just in general, not limited to landlords. And the same thing of getting local lending institutions to use energy-efficient, to develop and sell energy-efficient loans of some kind or another is a better way to do it than doing the sort of incentives kind of model that's talked about here.
Councilmember Clark?
The only thing I would add to that is I'm not sure that there's currently an incentive to do energy retrofits. The challenge is that so much of the energy in apartment buildings now is paid for by the landlord, so they have an immediate incentive built into that to go ahead and do the retrofits anyway. I think the challenges would be where the renter actually gets the savings, but I don't think that's a huge issue, because there's not a lot of them, like family buildings in Tacoma Park where the landlord doesn't pay the utilities. So I'm not opposed to it, but I don't think it's high priority to work on rewriting that rule right now. I wouldn't put it at the top of the list.
Councilwoman Schultz?
I kind of like the model that's suggested here, because it kind of leverages the private sector to do something by our, and our not having to do something. You know, if we could make, create an incentive for landlords to reduce their carbon footprint, that reduces the pressure on them to need to raise rents, which then eventually devolves to the benefit of the tenants, but it also can benefit the environment as well. And, you know, anytime we can, by amending an ordinance, you know, incentivize the private sector to do something that they might not otherwise do, I don't know if that's true, but, you know, heck, why not? Because it might not cost us that much money to do something like that.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this idea, and think it may be appropriate at some time, but I don't think that, given today's economic situation and the hardship that many families are facing, that we need to do anything that's going to possibly lead to higher rents for the residents in Tacoma Park. And basically, that's what it's saying, that it will allow for a noble cause, and a cause that I would fully support under different circumstances, but given the economy today.
So do folks feel like this is second tier rather than first tier?
I had a follow-up question about this. Colleen, you're saying if the owner is paying utilities, and they make the improvements, they save the money, so why should the renters also have to pay on top of the savings that they--
Exactly.
So, second tier?
The reason why I suggested the other things is because even if you have a landlord now who wanted to do that, the market is such that, like, where would you get the, where would you get the capital from, and the loan money from? So a revolving loan fund for the energy-efficient buildings, and these energy-efficient loans that exist in the market now would be ways to help incentivize that to happen without necessarily affecting the rents of the people that live in the buildings, but maybe overcoming what I think is the more, is the true barrier at this point to participation.
Not, no access to capital?
I think it's a bigger barrier than the issue of the rent.
But how big of a loan fund do you think we'd have to create to actually move the needle?
It depends on what the retrofits were, and how long you would allow them to, you know, pay off the money. People do use CDPG money for this. You have to pay it back into CDPG, I think, at the end of the cycle, but you can, I think you can do some revolving loan stuff with CDPG. The other thing is that, you know, if we were going to ultimately do some kind of a bond finance for some of this stuff that we're talking about, like purchase of streetlights or things like that, if you bond finance it, you, you know, you're using other people's money to reloan in your own community, and it's tied to the title of the house, relatively secure money, so.
But the individual houses, there's a problem with that related to HUD's rule around that, right? But with a big apartment building, that might not be the case.
HUD's rule around--
Like HUD made a rule, basically, that I think that they wouldn't guarantee mortgages on houses that did that, because it's unclear where the priority is in terms of who gets paid first in term, with the house, and it creates like an additional debt burden, basically. I think they're wrong, but I think that's--
You can have, I'm not familiar with that. You can have a second loan on a house that's HUD, it was an FHA loan, a house that's HUD insured. You can have a second on that.
No, I know you--
And you can also, they also have energy-efficient loans now in the regular market that you can connect people with.
And we can take it off on them, pretty sure, like GSE reform has, until GSE reform gets done, this is an issue that we can't create a loan and then a repayment associated with that loan on the house, and have a guaranteed mortgage. I'm pretty sure, but we can talk about--
Okay.
I like the idea of a loan fund.
Go to Councilmember Schultz, but I just--
Yeah, it does make sense to sort of say this is a second tier, that it's an intriguing idea. It might be useful to talk to some landlords and just sort of say, if we did this, would you do that or not, and why? So that, because whether it's a revolving loan fund, or leveraging COLTA, rent controls, I have no idea. It bears, I think it bears consideration, but I don't think we, right now, probably can say exactly how this thing could be made to work, but probably some way it could.
Okay. And Councilmember Snipper, and I'll just remind folks that this is five of 11 of the high priorities, and we're in 40 minutes.
Just a quick comment. One of the reasons I like the loan fund kind of idea, or energy-efficient loans, they can be used for commercial property as well as rental property, and we do have a number of commercial properties in Tacoma Park that would benefit.
So, second tier, but there's some interesting questions to ask. Waste, and there's two items in there, rewards for recycling and household organic waste. Can I get Public Works Director Braithwaite to just give us a 30-second recap on the organic waste piece? Because I remember you gave us some information on where things stood on that.
Yeah, the biggest issue, as with most establishment of recycling programs, is you've got to have a market, or else you don't have a program. I was able to identify one company out in Howard County that is accepting organic household waste. They're a yard waste processing facility. There's the potential to explore use of their facility for composting all organic waste, though there is quite a cost burden that would be associated with that, largely in transportation costs. So what you would end up doing, if you were looking at a greenhouse gas emission inventory for this type item, it wouldn't make it through the test, basically. It would generate more greenhouse gas emissions to collect and transport these items to a facility that far away than it would generate. My basic concern is, as with this program, as all our programs, the concept that it could actually be used to generate revenue for the city is a very, has very limited applicability, basically because of the cost of the infrastructure and the cost of collection. These are basic city services, collecting items, you know, that is trash-related, and so they generally don't generate revenue anywhere near the cost of the program itself. So just a cautionary note on that, if this is viewed as a way to generate money. It's usually viewed as a way to avoid cost, those being the incineration costs or the waste hauling costs. So it's out there as a possibility. I would have a higher comfort level if there were something closer, and if it was a little more competitive in the market. It's still being explored. I know COG has a working group that's trying to facilitate organic waste composting in the DC metro area, so I think we'll be seeing some activities on this, continuing and growing over time. What the right set of factors is to get started, we'll just have to continue to explore and take a look at it cost-wise.
Thanks. Can I suggest we put that on the back burner and monitor, but leave it there? So rewards for recycling? Councilmember Snipper?
I'm not, I'm not in favor of this one. I think there's a fair number of issues about this. Larger families could have a problem with it. It would encourage a kind of midnight moving of my trash around to my neighbors, you know, if I had a big party and I generated a lot of trash. So I'd keep it on the side of my house for a couple of weeks and dole it out so I didn't go over the volume limit. I don't know, I just, to me, it just seems like it's just way too complicated for use here. I'd rather focus on other kinds of stuff as we have, I think, for example, switching to a single-stream recycling has simplified the whole recycling thing for people in Tacoma Park. And there, you know, I'd like to see more, more things being recycled rather than focus on this kind of thing.
Councilmember Clark?
Well, this is one of my favorite recommendations. It is, because it makes so much sense. As I've said before, you know, we had this when I lived in Oakland, and we started out with a big trash can, and we found out that we could pay less for a smaller trash can, and we figured out how to recycle more of our stuff. We did do that midnight thing, though. Phil, across the street from me, would call me, and I would call him sometimes. I'd say, you know, I have extra trash, and--
Exactly.
--we would find capacity in trash cans up and down the street. And one of the other things I think made it work was that twice a year, they had bulk pickup, essentially. You could put out whatever you wanted to, and the trash folks would come and pick it up, and that was one of the ways they combated the problem of illegal dumping, and that was very effective. But I think it's a great way to use the market to incentivize recycling and reduction in trash. I'm sensitive to the idea that you would have, you know, if you have large families, it would be more burdened by it, but I just tell you, when I lived in Oakland, I had like seven people living in my house. I had like three foster kids, and one on the weekend, and my nephew living in my house, and we actually were still able to keep all of our trash into the smallest choices of the trash cans during that time. So you got more people to process the recycling.
Did you have a trash compactor?
We did not, unless you consider the kids jumping up and down on the trash to smash it down in the can of trash. it down in the can, the trash compactor. But you know, interestingly, it did get everybody in the family involved in identifying what was recyclable, so you could put as much stuff into the recycling bin as you wanted to. And we didn't have this in Oakland, but my parents had the large recycling bin at their house in, in Brea and it also engaged my parents much more in recycling because they had a large bin, they could, they could fill it up and they kept putting more of their recyclable stuff into it. It was interesting to watch the behavior change happen in my family and friends and where, where I saw this.
Councilmember Wright?
I agree with Councilmember Clay. I mean, I do think, I'm sensitive to those issues that Ruben mentioned. I think they're real, that, some of that will happen. But I also think that's part of changing and trying something new. And I think that this does have the real potential to get people refocused. And if you couple it also with allowing people, I know we already provide free composting bins that aren't the best, but we could, just like we offer a trash can that people can purchase, you could offer a good composting vehicle for people to do composting in place. And when you come down to it, there's really, I'm not, we don't do this now, but we have friends who live in Boston who do it. They throw away so little and you really get down to what you can recycle, what you can compost. And I think it really could be a game changer and really incentivize people in the right way. The only downside I see to it is that you have to turn the cost of garbage disposal from a property tax issue into a fee issue and you don't get the tax deduction on it. But that's, I mean, that, that is a slight downside, but I would take the trade-off to try this. And I'd be open to, to saying like, let's have a neighborhood try it. I don't know if that creates too much craziness for, for, for the Public Works Department, but do we wanna try it somewhere and see what happens within the city? We don't wanna do the whole city at the start.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm with Ms. Braithwaite on the household organic waste. I'd put that at low priority. And I'm convinced by Councilmember Clay on the, on the rewards for recycling, though I'm wondering, Colleen, does it mean that there's, you're gonna be charged for your garbage collection no matter what? And then it's more, if you use more, a bigger bin? Is that how it worked out in Oakland?
Well, that is how it worked in Oakland, but we were just saying that, you know, you could provide the first trash can as part of your taxes. So if you used, are they 32 gallon and 64? If you so.
Usually 64 and 96.
64 and 96.
Yeah, do a 64.
So you got, you get the 64 gallon is included in your taxes.
That's where I was headed. I was thinking that.
But if you want to.
The first one's free and then, yeah, if you want more, well then.
Then you have to pay after.
And I don't know how much that would burden our accounting department in figuring out who had to pay for this 94 and so forth, but we're resourceful. And it would, I think it would, I think it would be good. So that's where I am on that.
Just enable those who pick it up to collect.
There's also the new capital cost for the containers that would have to be factored in. That's a huge, you know, half a million dollar expense if you're looking at citywide provision of toters or trash carts. So that's been what's kind of limited movement before on this, the upfront cost of purchasing and facilitating the distribution of trash toters.
Councilmember Schultz?
I just know that ever since we started single stream recycling, that I went from two regular garbage cans to one. Sometimes I don't even fill that one up. So I think as we learned, we get incentivized or nudged into doing more and more recycling, that, you know, we, we can save money and I think the incentive idea is, is a good one. I think, I like the idea of maybe doing a pilot, see if it works.
So my sense is that on this one, it's kind of a.
Yes.
It's kind of, it's kind of a, I'm, I'm giving them numbers one and two for top priority and second tier and no number for back burner. And my sense is it's kind of a tentative one.
That's good.
Is that a.
I'll push it over the top.
Accurate sense?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking there's some implementation issues and maybe we wanna try a pilot. It's not gung ho, yes, we wanna do this. It's, this would be a good idea, but.
Where's the half a million coming from? That was the question.
I'm gung ho about it.
I'm gung ho opposed.
I'm gung ho except for that nasty half a million bucks.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's why it was, that's why it was one with some.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
And I, and I'm kind of a, somewhere, I'm, I'm somewhere between Councilmember Snapper and Councilmember Robinson, one with trepidation. So if I can suggest, we just kinda go one with trepidation on that one, it's like a one and a half.
Okay.
However, anybody wants to designate it, it's not quite one.
1.5.
1.36.
All right, 1.36 it is.
It's not quite a one, it's a 1.36.
1.36, we'll put down 1.36. Okay, water quality, stormwater retrofit projects. Can I suggest in moving this along that we're gonna have to do this whether we want to or not? We've been doing it already, we wanna continue doing it, we have to find opportunities for more and we have a dedicated fee system to deal with it. We're probably gonna have to raise that fee, given what's going on with the EPA in Chesapeake Bay. And it's just, yes, yes, yes.
Right. And I think Colleen's suggestion to raise the stormwater fee is definitely on the table.
And that's, that's gonna be a budget discussion and we'll probably have to end up there. And if we, and if it's not this year, it's next year. And there was a chart that I got at the COG Chesapeake Bay and Water Resources Policy Committee meeting on Friday and it provided information on all of the jurisdictions who have either fees or dedicated parts of the taxes to go toward this. And it showed that in, both in the COG region and in the country, our fee is like right on point with what people are doing right now. It was like everybody's kind of averaged $50 and we're 48. So, and it showed that the outliers to that were Seattle and Portland who were at a fee of about 200 a year. And how, you know, what they were doing with that. So there is good information out there. We're, we're kind of, we were a leader in going this way in Maryland and everybody else is now contemplating, gee, being forced to go there by potential bills in Annapolis and looking to us and others for how it's done. So I think we'll just have to keep going the way we're going. Councilmember Wright?
I was just gonna say with the changing weather patterns and global warming and more extreme weather events, you could make the argument that making sure you're handling stormwater properly was a public safety issue and therefore perhaps speed camera money could be used in capital projects related to stormwater.
And so we'll link the, the cameras to auxiliary cameras that monitor the runoff and the streams and that way we can have a direct correlation between money in and other.
It's getting light.
When the stream rises, the, the fine for the speed camera can go up.
Transportation, traffic flow improvements. Councilmember Snapper?
I support Colleen's suggestions for improving pedestrian bicycle accessibility, supporting sidewalks and lane improvements. And I have more to say about sidewalks. Signal improvements and improved junction traffic flow. I personally would love to see a well-designed roundabout, not the things that pass for roundabouts in DC, which are poorly designed, but well-designed ones. The problem in the junction is it's just not big enough. There's no, there really isn't room to put in a well-designed one there. So I, I don't really support a traffic circle at the junction. But I do support a whole long list of, we could start down what they are, pedestrian and traffic and similar improvements. On sidewalks, I know there are places in the, I just wanna say this, there are places in the city that don't want sidewalks for whatever reason. Hey, I got plenty of places in my ward where people are crying for sidewalks and so I'm happy to.
You'll take everybody else's.
Yeah, I'll take everybody else's.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm pretty much right where Ruben is. I'm, we have a Tacoma Junction Committee and I'm sure they'll weigh in on what they think is best for traffic in the junction and I'm, I'm, wanna wait and see what they say. And I'd also like to explore how to move traffic through the junction. Bruce, you and I were, I think show the opinion that a blinking red light might be the very best way to do it, so.
Yeah, they're surprisingly effective.
Yeah.
Or no lights at all and just sort of say like, yeah, good luck.
Three-way stop, four-way stop.
Yeah.
Or like parts of Europe that just like have at it.
Yeah, exactly.
Councilmember Wright?
I was gonna say that I feel that this is probably a second order item. I'm supportive of improving the traffic flow, but it feels second order because I, for two reasons. One, I'm not sure of the actual environmental impact of it. Yes, I think it'll save some. And second is, I think we want, we need to wait for the Tacoma Junction Task Force to really give us some perspective on this. And I think, I don't necessarily agree that the, the specific recommendation here that a roundabout is the way to go there, particularly based on what Ruben cited, the size and then what you'd have to do with a roundabout potentially in front of the firehouse and what was proposed before. So to me, that's why it kinda isn't, isn't highest priority because I think we need to wait mainly for the junction task force.
So people agree second pri, second tier at this point? With, with some directions that are preferable and some that are, get to go? Air quality, small, small powered gas engines. What I wrote down on this one was, I reiterate, my, my Newton battery lawnmower runs in circles around my formerly either two-cycle or four-cycle gasoline ones. I got rid of them. I would never go back. It works even on a large yard with a hill. It's, you know, so anything, so if we can do things to encourage not using two-strokes and going to battery and whatever, but comments? Councilmember Snapper?
Thank you. I support Colleen's suggestion to go ahead and ban two-stroke engines for any device where a four-stroke alternative exists. I like the idea of enforcing, of enforcing anti-idling laws, although we had, when we had that discussed, it was a little tricky on how to do it, but I'm sure staff can work on at least some version of how to do that. And yeah, I remember the discussion on burning of trash and refuse and we do need to clarify that.
And can I note that that makes two sections in a row where Councilmembers Clay and Snapper agree?
We mostly agree.
I said there's only one, really.
Councilmember Wright?
I agree with the, the ban on anything but four-cycle with the addition that I think there should be a partial ban on leaf blowers in the off-season. So, and that's for two reasons. One, I'm not sure that, that leaf blowers are for two-cycle. Do they have four-cycle leaf blowers now?
They claim that they have four-cycle leaf blowers, although I think the majority of the ones that are owned are two-cycle leaf blowers.
And they're probably large and heavy and not many people are gonna, probably wanna spend the money to buy one because they probably.
Get an electric one instead.
Don't need one because an electric one will work for many people.
Yeah. The problem with the electric is one that, again, Councilmember Clay pointed out, which is if you, you're a landlord, you go to your rental property, you're not gonna plug in your electric blower into their electrical outlet because they pay the electricity and that would be rather unfair.
That's why I own a gas-powered lawnmower.
And that's.
However, it is a four-cycle or four-stroke.
You own a four-stroke lawn mower?
Has, yeah, it has separate gas and, sure, it's separate gas and oil. I don't mix the gas and oil like I do with chainsaw.
Oh, well, you can have a two-stroke with, with separate oil and gas.
Nah, I think it's four.
Four-stroke means four, means intake valve and an exhaust valve, right?
Yeah, it was expensive. It was made in Canada.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm, I'm fine having bans on two-strokes for the city, but not for the general public because of the enforcement criteria. That's what I learned when I, on my field trip to California. And I think we can do a lot with education and, and with electric. So I'd put this as a two or a three.
Councilmember Schultz?
I agree with Dan on this one. The good thing about bans is that they have a moral sway, persuasion, is that the word? It's like the ban against not cleaning up after your dogs. Because it's, people know that that's what the rules are and so they, a lot of people are very conscientious about cleaning up after their dogs. The opposite side of that coin is, is that the police will tell you it's impossible for the police or anybody to actually enforce it unless the police officer happens to be present when the dog is doing its duty. And so I think it's the same thing with the leaf blower ban, is that nobody, there's never anybody to actually enforce it. Because I can't imagine who, who would be able to do that. But a ban might in fact persuade people to try really hard to avoid buying gasoline-powered anything, if possible. So I guess I'd put this, it's like he said, third, third, third tier, something that, or second tier.
And I would kind of agree that it's not first tier. Was there something that we heard that we had to do to clear up? Something about?
Yeah, there was a.
Barsha refuse burning? Was there something about the county?
Yeah, there is.
It was simply clarifying the code that we are not exempt from the county laws on open burning. It's just a clarification that the city attorney's office is working on.
So that, that will be coming to us?
I believe it's scheduled in February sometime.
Right, right. So I sense a divergence on this one?
I'm agreeing.
No, no, not on the burning, on the, on the, on this section, on the gas-powered engines.
I would agree with Dan.
Okay, then we have a majority of people who are saying second or third tier.
Of what item? Is it, is it Colleen's idea of the two to four or is it any sort of ban, partial or just the whole thing?
I think Dan's suggestion was that have a ban for the city, but not for residents.
And that's, so my sense was that it was not Colleen's item?
That it was or not?
The, about banning two-stroke engines where there's a four-stroke alternative.
No, I just think it, there should just be a ban. If they're gonna ban it, just ban them all, but, but realize that literal enforcement is going to be rather difficult.
It's, it's expensive, Brett, and, and can also promote antagonism between neighbors. That's, that was my experience in Piedmont and it was Palo Alto. I went and talked to the folks who do the enforcement. And in one case they ticket, for leaf blowers, in one case they ticket the person holding the leaf blower and in the other case they ticket the person who owns the property where the leaves are being blown from. So when it's the person holding the leaf blower, at least in those kind of hoi tihi neighborhoods, the guys, the contractors who would run up and down the peninsula doing landscape contracting were confused because whenever they came into town, they were slapped with a bunch of tickets and they got, so they had to have a guy whose job it was to inform and train the landscape contractors why they were being ticketed. Took quite a bit of time. And in the other case, when it's the person who owns the property, somebody's blowing, somebody's having somebody blow leaves and then somebody, their neck, their neighbor snitches on him and then the guy, the enforcement person comes over to give the property owner the ticket and then there's, he's wondering, how did, how did you know that leaves were being blown from my? from my property? It got, it was clearly quite messy in that part of it. I just hope that we could encourage people not to use leaf blowers in some other way.
Use education. Yeah, I like that idea.
So, did we have agreement among a majority to, with the exception of the action that we're going to take about the burning, that this was a lower priority? Okay. Then the last item, which is habitat, increased tree planting and various component pieces of that. Was there a sense to make that a high priority? And if so, were there any comments about any potential pieces of that or, you know, either pro or con? Councilmember Robinson.
I'm impressed by Todd's approach to this, and I say, keep going, Todd.
Councilmember Schultz.
I think this is great. I think we should, as we started to talk about last week, go even further and try to devise a way where we can plant trees on private property. I still think there is a way, and, but I haven't had my turn to, we suspended our conversation on it, but I think it's, there's a way to do that.
Councilmember Simmons.
I agree with this item and strongly support councilmember Schultz's suggestion that we look for legal ways that we can plant trees on private property.
Lights going on, lights going off. Councilmember Clay.
So, I put, I split all the habitat proposals, but I thought the two that were the most important are to complete an accurate tree inventory, and then that we use that inventory to drive our policy and education. And I think one of the things, again, that the task force was coming back to is that in 2000, we had a plan. I think previously they had other plans, and they had these good ideas, but then they didn't actually use them to make change in the policy and the things that we did. So, I think that we would agree that we need to continue with what the arborist is doing around the tree inventory and expand that activity. And then the other thing is to increase the plantings in the public and private areas and to develop incentives for tree planting. And, you know, we already talked about being able to pre-plant trees, but being able to plant on private property would be another way to increase the plantings in the, in the private areas if we could use tree fund dollars for that. And I think that the recommendations to increase planting in the New Hampshire median area and those things, but all those things that increase plantings in the public and private areas, I think we should go forward with.
Councilmember Wright.
I third councilmember Schultz and Simmons' private property.
And let me just say that I'd like to see more thought in how we do that, lacking specificity. I don't particularly want to go there, but I'm intrigued that there might be a way to do it. So, I'm open to it, but I just kind of have a first blush resistance to the city might increase on private property.
You're skeptical, is what you're saying.
Yes, but I'm open-minded on it.
You know, it's possible that staff could develop something. I mean, the devil's in the details on this one.
Exactly, exactly. So, I want to see the details on this one, and I might find
If we're out of public spaces to plant in, if we're out of public spaces to plant in, we have trees in the tree fund, let's get them in the ground.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I have no problem with that, but it's like, how do we get them on private property? We don't want to be seen as, you know, setting up people who get that benefit, and how do you get that benefit, you know? If it works out in a good way.
Run it to people for a penny a year.
I don't think we're going to have that many people climb rank of trees.
Is there anything that was not already discussed that people think is a high priority and needs our attention this evening? Councilmember Wright.
The whole idea of the solar cooperative purchasing approach isn't really articulated in here. There's the renewable energy purchasing, but I think there's something that's been talked about more, particularly related to the solar panel discussion in trees, was this idea of the actual putting the solar on public buildings or buildings that are more appropriate, because there's not tree cover, and then having a cooperative, which allows people to pay money and get the credits or the electricity from that. So, to me, that's a high priority, I think should be added to the list, but.
It does mention it under energy recommendations.
But I think it's probably a good idea to call that out as something that we would like to see continuation of effort on, seeing how feasible that is and where we can go. I was intrigued when that came up, that that might be a very good way to go.
The co-op group is continuing to meet, and they've made progress in that they've committed to doing this exact approach and are now evaluating locations where it can be done in the city.
Okay, so we want to
Small aldermen.
Yeah, we want to support that effort and see if we can go for maximum enablement of that effort. Does that, so that, put it as a first tier? People agree? Okay. Councilmember Wright.
I just want to say, I know the members of the task force on the environment are not here tonight, but there was much pushing of us to move forward on this. I know that we moved at a slower pace than people wanted to, but I think we have a very solid set of recommendations. I feel we have a ranging from a deep commitment to let's sort out the budget issue and provided we can figure it out, kind of range up here, but I feel very heartened and excited that we're moving towards returning Tacoma Park to being environmental leader. I look forward to us aggressively pursuing these tier-one items, and I consider this in line with the idea of a green deal for Tacoma Park, so.
Councilmember Schultz.
I would ask the city council to consider two things to be given a degree of priority. One is that I don't, and I don't think that the environmental task force addresses this at all, but that is, is to, is with regard to the removal of invasives in our parks and some, on our stream valleys, our forested areas as opposed to, say, our parks, which are pretty well maintained. I just think in some cases, particularly in my ward in the Long Branch Stream Valley, we've got overgrowth of invasives that is just really sad to see large trees just disappearing under vines. The other thing is plastic bags. The TF does mention it, and, but it's not treated by them or us as a high priority. And the, I think the excuse is, or the comment's been, well, the state's legislature is considering it, and indeed they are, they were considering it last session, and I, and delegate Carr is going to reintroduce it this session. But there's a big lobby against it, not surprisingly, and I'm not particularly hopeful that it'll pass. And I just think of that, I would love to be able to see us start to move forward at our level on a plastic bag ban that could, would work if we could coordinate it with some of the adjacent municipalities, who I think would probably be, would be attracted to the idea. I think we can't really do it just for the city of Tacoma Park, because we would put our merchants perhaps at a disadvantage, and it would create a lot of confusion. But if we could coordinate it with Hyattsville, Greenbelt, Kensington, and other nearby municipalities, I think we could embarrass the state of Maryland into actually moving forward on a state level at some point. Those are my two ideas that I'd like the council to think about.
Discussion on those? Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you for bringing those up, Fred. I agree wholeheartedly on both. If we say that we want our staff to pay attention to invasives, we have to be very clear about it, because I remember an arborist, prior to our current arborist, when I was mucking around in what's known as Tacoma Woods, I remember him saying to me, look, if I have, if I have trash on the street and street trees and stuff that need attention along the street, and then I have invasives in a stream valley, I'll go for the street and the street trees and the trash every time, because there's no one to yell at me if I don't do the invasives in the stream valley.
Right.
And I do get yelled at if I don't take care of the street trees. And so, we have to be, we have to be clear about that. And as far as the plastic bags go, I fully agree. I think we should ban them, and I love your idea of looking to other municipalities to lock arms with.
With regard to invasives, much of the problem is on property control, not by the Maryland National Park and Planning Commission. So, we can't do that much about it anyway, but we can, we could make an effort to get park and planning to take it more seriously and try to figure out ways
Way to try.
Address it.
Council, Councilman McCall.
I continue to support the plastic bag ban. I've supported it the last five years, but I'm going to kick another part into it, and this is the polystyrene issue.
Right.
The things I think about plastic bags and polystyrene are that, you know, there are ready alternatives. As I said before, if McDonald's can stop using styrofoam and can use paper products, there isn't a small business in this country that can't do that, because, you know, McDonald's comes on board, they create the market, they make it affordable. I went into the Urban Barbecue or something like that after church on Sunday, and they handed me a styrofoam cup. And every time that happens to me here, it just, I'm just like, what's wrong with you? What don't you understand about this? I mean, I would like to see those two things go hand in hand. I was living in Santa Cruz when they banned styrofoam sales in the city, and the difference in the beaches was immediate, because people could no longer buy those cheap styrofoam coolers that they overfilled with beer and ice until they cracked apart, and then they left them to roll down the beach. That stopped when that happened, and igloo stock probably went up in value because people were buying more regular coolers. And I think it makes, it can make a big, it can make a big difference, and I would really like to see us continue to pursue that.
I would note that the country of Italy has banned plastic bags, so that makes, at least France and Italy now, having done that, France did it about five years ago.
Yeah. The other thing I want to say is about the invasive vegetation. I totally support the goal of addressing invasive vegetation, but I don't think like, you know, government armies of people going out and doing the invasive plant removal is what it's, sort of where it's at. We couldn't, we couldn't afford the cost of maintaining that, quite frankly. When you think your taxes are high now, that would just drive you nuts. I think what we need is a better way to work with our local organizations to actually have our army of people who can go out and do invasive removal. Maybe we could help coordinate some, maybe we could help with the plan, but, you know, we know that Friends of Sligo Creek does it, my Girl Scout troop has done it, different groups, but we just kind of pick an area, we're not really kind of coordinated by different groups. So, I would just say that I think that's a thing that we have to do as a, as a community and through volunteer effort. And so, when we prioritize it, it has to become a priority of the community to be able to give their time to go do that.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. I support banning plastic bags also, but I think sometimes public policy works by moving towards your goal, and Tacoma Park has, has been said, is small. I wonder if there would be a way to do what some merchants do now, which is to give you a reduction, a per-bag reduction, if you bring your own bags, and that in essence you are paying for the plastic bag, if you will. And my observation is, in DC, where that's what they've done, essentially charging for plastic bags, is there's been a huge drop in the use of plastic bags just by, just by that one method. So, I think we could, we'll try to ban, but start with something that would be a bit easier to do.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I support all those ideas, just on the invasive plants. I think there are different levels, different tiers, if you will, of invasives. Unfortunately, kudzu is probably the most aggressive of the invasive plants, and we have a serious problem in some areas in Ward Four. And unfortunately, I think a lot of the kudzu that exists in Tacoma Park and our parks were, was planted as an erosion control measure years ago, and now it's out of hand anyways. I think it's more than a army of, an army of residents is able to cope with, and I don't think that we are in a position economically to be able to attack it, ask the, I don't think we're going to get a response from park and planning to attack it. The only thing that I can see that would help with the kudzu is some liberalization of the use of herbicides for controlling that and controlling its growth. And I don't know if we're ready to request that change in the park and planning policy. I support the plastic bag ban. Again, as we, as we do these things, I think, I think we have to, we're laying a lot of additional tasks on the staff's plate, and I think we have to think about the funding for that, as we talked about at the very beginning of this discussion. And then lastly, I would just say that the styrofoam ban, I think is, it's, time is due, but I think that probably the biggest user of styrofoam in the city is Montgomery County Public Schools, and so I would encourage
[laughing]
I would encourage this council to take that on as a mission, and that's something that would not require a lot of staff support, but would require something we do have a lot of, and it's councilmember jawbone. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
I support the plastic bag ban and the styrofoam ban. I would have preferred to go with a kind of five-cent charge like they have in the district, but I just think it's like operationally too difficult for us. And given now that the district does it, and we're as close to the district as other places, I know at least in our neighborhood, a lot of people, the supermarket they shop in, at least some of the time, is the Safeway on Piney Branch Road, right? So, you have the bags in your car anyway, they're usable bags, and so you end up using them when you go to Whole Foods or the giant that's closer in, into Tacoma Park, and then other places as well, like the hardware store. And so, I would be in favor of both those bans. I'm very sensitive to the invasive plant issue, but I do feel like it's a second-tier item for me, just because of the magnitude of the issue and the cost to doing something. You know, I think we should continue work with Friends of Sligo Creek, which has been the main kind of defensive force on that issue, particularly in the creek.
So, my sense on the invasives, plastic bags, and people are saying both polystyrene and styrofoam, they are different, correct?
Yes.
Same?
Same.
Same, okay. No, I'm getting same, I'm getting different.
They're different.
There's one a subset of, yeah.
Styrofoam is a subset of polystyrene.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that sounds right to me. So, if we say polystyrene.
It would include styrofoam, but it would also include other things we'd have to be sure we want to ban.
Right, so.
I think we're really talking about styrofoam.
Styrofoam.
I'm not sure.
Well, okay.
The answer to this question is Brenda Platt.
Yes, I know. But my sense from the discussion is that styrofoam slash polystyrene is the one that people probably feel
Take the most.
As strong or stronger about as plastic bags, that it seems like that one may be a little a little easier. I don't know, maybe I'm splitting hairs here, but plastic bags and polystyrene slash styrofoam.
I think if you were to decide styrene and plastic bags.
Yeah, that's, I'm thinking, I'm thinking it's easier. So it's kind of if we were gonna say of these items, which I wasn't gonna put ones or twos, I was gonna go A, B, C, within the priority of polystyrene is highest, plastic bags next, and invasives third, in terms of prioritization. And then any of this is gonna have to, is gonna require basically budget implications. So it's, it's, it's gonna come back to us as we go through budget, but at least that's provided, like other items this evening and this agenda item, information for staff as the budget gets prepared about what the priorities are.
All right. Styrofoam is a brand name.
Okay.
And it's owned by the Dow Chemical Company.
Ooh.
Where is it?
Let's get greenpeace in here.
Any other items? It's four minutes of eleven. I don't see any lights. Is there anything the city manager needs? Your turn.